With the meeting of July 11th, 2022, the district board and the Metropolitan District, please come to order. Clerk, please read the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris Stone, temporary clerk. William Di Bella?
Here.
Commissioner Adel?
Here.
Commissioner Avedisian?
Commissioner Buell?
Here.
Commissioner Bush? Commissioner Curry?
Here.
Commissioner Drake?
Here.
Commissioner Gardeau?
Here.
Commissioner Healy?
Here.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Here.
Commissioner Hoheb?
Here.
Commissioner Holloway?
Here.
Commissioner Iona? Commissioner LaChance? Commissioner Lester?
Here.
Commissioner Lewis? Commissioner Magnin?
Here.
Commissioner Maniscalco?
Commissioner Mandike?
Here.
Commissioner Marata? Commissioner Payne?
Here.
Commissioner Patel?
Here.
Commissioner Petosky? Commissioner Solemy?
Here.
Commissioner Suizy?
Here.
Commissioner Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner Torres?
Here.
Commissioner Vassino?
Here.
Commissioner Wolf?
Here.
Here.
We have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, a good republic, a righteous land, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, approval of the minutes of June 6th, 2025.
No move.
Are there any additions or deletions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Item five, public comments relative to agenda items.
Judy Allen, West Hartford. Just a quick question.
Just move the microphone.
Is that better?
Yep.
I think it's one of the last agenda items about a report from 2006, and I just wondered if you had available copies of that. Thank you.
John?
Yeah, we can get you a copy before the end of the meeting or before that item, sure.
Okay, thank you. Further comments? Further public comment? Item number nine, I'm sorry, item number six, report from district chairman, no report, report from the chief executive officer.
Thank you. I'll apologize in advance. I'm going to skim through a lot of material, and I'm not going to try to elaborate too much, so if there's any questions on my report, I'd be more than happy to answer. We presented to BPW last week, the 30th, I think it was, of June, regarding the integrated plan. We did have gone back and forth with DEEP on a number of different comments. We just received their responses on June 30th. We believe we are there. We're at a point where we can recommend to the board that we would, you know, adopt and approve the integrated plan as submitted to DEEP. So we'll be working with Chairman Vassino, bring that back to BPW to discuss that issue. In terms of, just a little highlight, I have been asked to sit on a conference on July 12th with NACWA in Boston to talk about a lot of specific things relating to the PFAS, as we know, which is a major issue on land application. I mentioned in the numerous meetings, there's a number of states, including Maine, which has banned PFAS land application. The state of Connecticut has always banned land application of human sludge. So that's going to be a big issue moving forward. We've been talking about the capacity studies and all those things that are really, this country is struggling with. So I've been asked to sit on a panel on July 12th, so I'll inform you of that once it's over. I've got an issue. I know Chris Stone has sent emails regarding the 2.5. I'm going to defer that to Chris. I have presented and discussed numerous times about all the good things we've done at the wastewater treatment plant. We talked about how much energy we've saved, how much we've done in terms of efficiencies. The chairman has asked staff, which we provided and we sent it to all of you, really a breakdown of our kilowatt hours consumed at our facilities. We actually have 180 meters. The largest meter, obviously, is at the Hartford Treatment Plant. But this just goes to the point of what I've said in the past. We've sent this to everyone. The reason why we use 2008 to compare to is because in 2008, the system was kind of where it was for the last 30 years. So we've done numerous improvements. And just to highlight the amount of effort that's been done since 2008 at our Hartford Treatment Plant, the report shows the annual kilowatt hours used has reduced 5 million kilowatt hours.
Suggesting call?
So since 2008, the facility was designed to handle 80 million gallons of sewer a day. The system is now designed to handle 200 million. So as you can imagine, all the work that's gone into building that infrastructure, lots more pumps, lots more equipment to do that, the tunnel that we're building as we speak, the drop shaft pump station that we're building as we speak, we have saved 5 million kilowatt hours per year in doubling the capacity of the plant. We've also saved $1 million a year in actual energy costs, and a lot of that's got to do with the heat recovery plant, which produces about roughly $2 million a year in revenue and produces about 1.7 megawatts of power that we use on site. So a lot of positive, good things there. We did have, again, a presentation to BPW. I have spoke with Rich Vassino, chairman this morning, and Chairman Di Bella regarding the discussion we had at BPW, and that was about a specific development, and really, development is going to be our issue for all of our towns because of stormwater management. But we have identified the fact that Westbrook Village, which is, they've already done phases 1, 2, 3. This is along the north branch of the Park River. They have already developed phase 1, 2, 3. They're looking to connect phase 4 to MDC's infrastructure. What we presented at BPW the other night was, there's really three options. The first option is they connect to an existing CSO pipe, which is a 54-inch pipe. That pipe serves as an overflow point for the community in Granby and Blue Hills area. The problem with connection of a new development to that pipe, our engineers have shown and proven that it will make it worse for the community upstream. So people will be surcharged in an event that they presently wouldn't be surcharged if they didn't connect. So the answer to that question was easy. The answer was no. The other option was connect to an existing 24-inch storm pipe, which phase 1, 2, 3 of the housing development connects to. The problem with that is we've shown at BPW that there's a surcharging event that occurs around a 10-year storm presently, because the pipes that lead into the river are being surcharged by the river itself, by the mud and the water in the river. And this is why it's so important for the city of Hartford to go forward with dredging the river as part of their stormwater management program. The north branch of the Park River is part of the way in which water gets out of the city. So they've got seven flood control pump stations, and the river is part of that network to get that water out. We also need, as part of our integrated plan, to have a place to dump our stormwater. And in Hartford, the north branch is part of that solution. In West Hartford, Trout Brook is part of that solution. But we had a meeting with the mayor last Thursday?
Thursday.
Last Thursday, and basically presented him with a letter that you all have received, and explained to them the reasons why we are proposing what we're proposing. You know, I'll summarize the meeting as, it was a very good meeting. The mayor understands our position, the board's position, at least BPW's position, and that the real only solution in short term is for the Housing Authority and/or the city to take ownership of this existing storm system piping that feeds phase 1, 2, 3, and now will connect to phase 4. And we have had a, I don't know, Bill, if you want to talk about the commitment we made, you want to talk about?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The whole context, you're talking about the context of the relationship.
Of dredging the river, yeah. So the point we made in the meeting was that the river needs to be dredged for two reasons. One, in part, all the existing pipes that flow into this river, two of them owned by the MDC, one of them's 102-inch pipe is owned by the city. The community is affected because the water, stormwater that's in those pipes can't get out of the pipe, even presently, at a 10-year storm. So connecting to those pipes, we're only going to make it worse for the local community. We don't want to do that, obviously. We don't want to take risk and liability knowingly that these pipes are already at their capacity. So we said to the mayors that the solution is, the city has committed, and we're going to do a study, a stormwater management study. We have to do it for our separation work. They have to do it for the dredging of the river. We're going to do it as a joint venture. We're going to develop an MOU. It's about $800,000. We are going to get a 48% grant. I don't know if the city will get 48% grant on their piece, but we're going to memorialize this in a MOU, and we're going to hire one engineering firm to do that work for both of us. The question becomes, does the city have the funding, which could be as much as $50 million, to dredge this river? So with that, I'm going to kick it off to Chris Stone and--
Let me just say something. This is a continuation of the meeting, a prior meeting that we had, and the issue that Chris will deal with you is the back and forth. We didn't go in there in a confrontational issue. We explained to him very clearly that we're there to help, but there's got to be equity here in how we do this, whether it's going legislature deep or those things to go together and try to resolve it. The big issue here is the $50 million that the mayor says the city doesn't have. And Chris will get into some of the conversations we had as a compromise, back and forth, and then an alternative to go to DEEP, to see whether the city would be eligible for clean water project money as we are. And that could be anything, but we generally get 48%.
Yeah, roughly.
Roughly 48%. And our recommendation was, the city, if it's going to be $50 million, go there, but there's going to have to be a contribution by the city relative to the rest of it, that the district board and the towns can't be asked to subsidize something that is owned by someone else. But Chris--
Yeah, Chris Stone, district council. There were two alternatives discussed, neither one of which was taken off the table, but they're really two separate avenues by which the city can fund the dredging of the north branch of the Park River. The first is accessing clean water fund, not clean water project funds, and there's a distinct difference. The clean water fund is a state-administered program. The city may be entitled to some percentage reimbursement. It deals with stormwater, which is not necessarily a clean water fund type project. So even if they get some money, the percentages may be lower than the 48%, which is what we get on the clean water project part of things for the CSO work that we're doing in Hartford. But that's one avenue that we suggested the city pursue. Their response was, well, why couldn't we include the dredging of the Park River as part of the integrated plan that we're implementing and we're prosecuting under what we call the clean water project? And we made no commitment to do that. We did indicate that we have tried to schedule a meeting with DEEP over the last couple of weeks to deal with other issues that we have, but we would be willing to, with the city, discuss whether that's even a possibility. There's a whole bunch of issues involved with that, not the least of which would be that your ratepayers would be assuming the responsibility for that $50 million, at least to the tune of 52% of it, that $50 million cost. And that's a decision that we're not going to make in a meeting at City Hall, nor quite frankly, that we're going to make at a meeting at DEEP. It's going to be made by this board as an amendment, if we can even do it, as amendment to the integrated plan that we've submitted to DEEP. So the first stop was our regulator, the low-hanging fruit. They're going to decide whether it's even a possibility. And then, obviously, the next and final stop, if that is a possibility, would be to this board. So those are the discussions on the Park River. The other thing we did talk about and that we've had some progress on, not as much as I would have liked, but we keep working on it, and that is the catch basin cleanup costs. That have been part of our discussions with the city for several months now. They have gone away from, we're not paying you anything, to at least willing to discuss a payment of some kind. But as significant, if not more significant, they're falling woefully short on the commitment going forward, not only in capping their, wanting to cap their liability per year, money-wise to us for these cleanups, but also not discussing at all what affirmative actions they have to take pursuant to their MS4 permit to make sure the streets are clean, in that we don't even incur the cost in the first instance, because our catch basins are cleaned as they should be, once, I think it's once every year and a half, as opposed to what we're doing now, which is something significantly more than that, primarily because of the status of the streets. So that's my contribution to--
What about the Housing Authority issue that Scott was talking about?
Yes. Oh, the--
Go ahead.
Yeah. I mean, Scott laid it out perfectly. It's really simple. Knowing what we know, that a connection of phase 4 to the existing infrastructure, without any improvement to or dredging of the Park River, is going to cause, have an adverse effect on upstream and downstream residents. Knowing that to be the case, to allow that hookup would be, in effect, accepting liability for that connection. And I don't think that's acceptable to the board. It's not acceptable to me as your lawyer. And that's why the suggestion from Scott and us, and the chairman, was if you want to connect without dredging the Park River, accept ownership of the pipe. Now, at such time as the--
Housing Authority.
Housing Authority, yeah. At such time as the north branch of the Park River, if it were, is actually dredged satisfactorily, then just like any other storm, separated storm sewer system that the city of Hartford refuses to accept ownership of, we would discuss, and I'd come back to the board, about whether you want to take it over at that point. But our liability is capped. Here, we know it's going to be a problem. So that was the other discussion, and the mayor was going to talk to the Housing Authority and the executive director of the Housing Authority and get their response to that proposal.
Any questions?
Can you give the board some history of Park River conduit? Why did, who did it? Why did it? And when was it done?
Who owns it?
And--
Here you go.
He hasn't been here--
I've been here longer than him, but he knows--
--the Park River conduit than I do.
Well, Commissioner, I'm definitely not historian on this topic, but I would tell you that the stormwater system in Hartford has been a debate for a long, long time. I was here probably for 10 years, and I was told forever that the Gully Brook conduit is owned by the city of Hartford until my buddy engineer, Mike Curley, did a presentation here in this room, and there was an easement necessary, and it showed the Gully Brook conduit is owned by the MDC. As you know, the stormwater management component of infrastructure is very specific, and the north branch of the Park River, the PRAC, the auxiliary PRAC, all of those things that get stormwater out of the city is owned by the city of Hartford. So there are things like the Gully Brook, which we, at some point, probably in the '50s or the '60s, took ownership of. And the reason why we took ownership of the Gully Brook was because we had actually dry weather days sewer going into the Gully Brook, and that was one of our first products that we did in 2008, '09, and '10, which is separation up on Albany Avenue to get that dry weather sewer flow out of the Gully Brook, because the entire Gully Brook was sent to the plant for treatment. But the north branch of the Park River, the PRAC, the auxiliary PRAC, those items are part of the stormwater management flood control system in the city of Hartford. I don't have the dates for you, but I could get them. I'm sure you know what they are because of your position here in the city of Hartford, but we can get you that information. But it is owned by the city of Hartford.
Is that-- Boopan, does that answer your question?
For now, it is okay.
Right, go ahead.
Al, you want to go first? I don't care.
How much does the city of Hartford owe the MDC for cleaning of the sewers? And is it $300,000? Is it--
Maybe $6,000, I believe.
How much? Approximately? It's 376.
And how much does that increase on a monthly basis as you're cleaning the sewers?
$35,000.
Now, you're bringing the soil--
Yeah.
--debris to Manchester. How much, so we're 370 now--
Yes. So Commissioner--
By $10,000 a month.
So Commissioner, the first quarter, September of 2021 to December, it was about 60-something thousand. It's gone down since. The ultimate goal is, if the city does its job in cleaning the streets, it should be zero. And as part of our plan, it was a kind of a non-technical plan. We started putting these plates, stainless steel plates with holes in them that cover the mouth of the catch basin, right, which we showed you.
So they don't clog.
And so the garbage can't get in, excuse me, cannot get into the--
But the MDC spending, what, 6,000, it's so much per--
Yeah, well--
It was a pretty expensive number, wasn't it?
Well, it cost us about $170--
The city of Hartford, again, is benefiting by us doing this. So now they sweep the streets. They get everything, and we're still owed the 370.
Correct.
And then, on that one, and then what Chris was saying, as far as the Park River cleaning it, I mean, I would never support having a town in Newington, Weathersfield, West Hartford pay for that project. If it costs the city $50 million, they're going to have to bond it.
You're talking about--
Yeah, now I'm talking about the other thing, right. You know, so, you know, you can do all the talking you want, Chris, but I hope you're not making any deals.
No, no.
I know you said you weren't.
Chris, that, excuse me, Ray, that was just the opposite. We're very clear and distinct, the three of us, that in our opinion, the board would not support a position of MDC paying or the towns paying, because if that's the case, you've got West Hartford with a storm sewer problem and everybody else. So it had to be, from an equity standpoint, and the governor, the mayor understood clearly what we're saying. There's nine votes in Hartford on the MDC. I don't think the other 20 would be receptive to a subsidy. And I also went further than that and said that the city of Hartford was, the state assumed, what, $580 million of their debt, which means technically, the city of Hartford is basically debt-free. Hartford's, you know--
Pretty good.
--tell a story. So that was made very clearly. The question was, could we go to DEEP under the clean water funding, and the city would get, if they got 48% of it, that's $24 million. It would leave 26. Now, the city did have a point where they raised the question on who also empties into that PRAC, and that is Bloomfield and also West Hartford has distributed into that river, which becomes the Park River PRAC, and then goes into the conduit that goes through and straight out to the city. So they raised that question, and you answered that.
Yeah, and we've said to the mayor, and we said this to BPW, you know, the expectation that DEEP is going to allow clean water funds to pay for the dredging of a river, this is a stormwater management issue, not a CSO issue. So practically, the answer from DEEP and from EPA will be no. But--
You didn't want to be--
You know, we were, it was a very positive meeting, and we tried to be accommodating of the request of the mayor, but we did explain to them that we have seven other towns that approve the integrated plan, and to spend another $50 million on dredging Hartford's river, you know, we know that West Hartford is dredging their own river. The Trout Brook is being dredged by the city of West Hartford. They're paying for that. So it's an issue for the board and for--
Right, and we explained that, the politics of that. Just one last thing, is in the event that Hartford did not dredge that, it creates a major problem for us as MDC, because we're going to have to figure out what the alternative for the outflow would be for Blue Hills and wherever else we have to do in the clean water project. So that's something that could be substantial, too, relative to where we go and how we get there. And remember, we still have a 52-inch pipe--
54, yeah.
54-inch pipe in there. The surcharge is now because it's inundated with mud and it's submerged, which means it can't discharge into that river because of the dredging problem, and it ends up, as Scott has set out, as community meetings, you know, we told you by separating these sewers that we did in your neighborhood, that we would eliminate the surcharge. Well, the surcharging is caused by factors. If you can't get out of that pipe, it goes back up the pipe, and it creates the same problem. So those are some of the issues. But again, we laid them all out in the city. We're going to have another meeting fairly soon, because we've got to get the DEEP issue resolved with them, and we're pursuing that. On the collection issue, you're still, Chris, working with the city's team. Scott and I did for, what, maybe eight or 10, 15 streets, we were up there on the Blue Hills Avenue, I'm sorry--
Albany.
Albany Avenue issue, and we took a ride through the streets up there, and the city is definitely making progress on cleaning the streets. And I think what Scott came up with, the idea of putting the stainless steel protectors so that the bottles and the cans and everything else can't find their way, when it starts to rain, into that. But the water can still get in there. So we've made some progress on that, and we do have the Corporation Council negotiating with Chris on the rest of the cost of what we own. So, you know, we're moving in a positive and hopefully a solution to the overall problem. But the real question becomes, what is our alternative, and what will it cost us in the event that we can't use the PRAC because of it, the city won't do that, won't dredge the property? Unresolved. I'm sorry, Al.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I guess a question that I have, Westbrook, which is basically, has the old projects have been torn down there, and they're putting up essentially what I would characterize as affordable housing in that area.
It's a project that they're adding. They've demolished--
They've done what, three phases?
And they've added new--
Yes, three.
There's three.
They've done three, and they've got two more to do.
Right.
I guess one of my questions would be, is there any possibility of our approaching HUD? Are someone having a discussion with HUD about this? If they're, I mean, it's a tenuous connection, but the fact of the matter is that if you're talking about essentially putting affordable housing in and the project to stall because we've got basically issues with regard to the handling of water, would maybe, is there some money at HUD that we could, you know, take a run at, or they could take a run at?
I don't know that, but there's a lot of money that is available in the, from the federal government now because of this infrastructure money and everything else that they're doing. But Scott, I don't know if you--
Yeah, Chris Stone, we can suggest that to the Housing Authority.
Yeah.
We don't own the infrastructure.
I understand that, but I mean, but someone's going to have to hold their hands because this is going to take a lot of soft shoe--
Sure, sure. I think it's a good suggestion, and we'll make that suggestion through them tomorrow, through their executive director.
Cal, Commissioner?
Following along the lines of Al just said, I don't know, is there any role for the Army Corps of Engineers, recommendations they can make from the federal side that they may be able to support some-- they may be able to support something that HUD might do? You know, I'm saying, this is really related to housing, affordable housing, and the infrastructure that supports that affordable housing. So it seems to me like it's a package deal. You know, if you approach it that way and you look at what are the federal agencies that may be available to provide some sort of support, maybe, you know, some here and some there, but that somehow it comes together and then lessens the cost for the city to be able to do that.
Commissioner Vesino asked that question, too, relative to our search for grants, and I think, Rich, you can just say what your feeling was on some of the things you've been looking at.
Yeah, same thing. I sent to Chris Stone FEMA also has programs for wastewater and water utility companies. So I think we should look at all the federal programs, not just deep.
No, and that's the grant issue. There's no doubt about it, and it's gonna require that we get more aggressive on pursuing those, because there is a lot of money with these infrastructure programs, and it's spread out in different agencies and a whole lot of different programs, and a lot of them have matured to the point where they're ready to allocate. So that's something we've gotta do. David, and then Cal. You want to follow up on the same thing?
I just want to follow up on that because, you know, there are things out there. Now, I'm concerned about, I know we have expertise in pursuing resources and where to, you know, look for those dollars to do the kinds of things that we do. I don't know how much of that expertise lies, you know, at City Hall in terms of, you know, looking at this very specialized kind of expertise, you know, water sewage and that sort of thing. And whether or not there's a way that, if we are not doing it already, to be able to at least offer some kind of support in terms of our expertise and say, listen, you know, you may not have all the support there, you may not know, you know, all of the nuances of all, you know...
Well, that's something we've pursued in these meetings, and we're talking about some kind of joint, that we move together in these issues, and you're right. The city does grant, has grant people that are, I would assume...
One thing is to have a grant person who can write a grant. The other piece of this is, you know, to have the people who have the expertise, the engineering expertise, the water expertise, to provide the support to the grant writers who are gonna put this together, because it's very scientific, it's engineering, you know, and it's a whole different ballgame. So you can have the greatest grant writer in the world, but if they don't know what they're talking about, it's just a lot of words on paper that don't mean anything. And that's, you know, that's what I'm concerned about, because this is a major, major, major undertaking. It's a lot of money, and to the extent that we can work together to provide this, to make it so that it moves forward in a real manner, you know, let's not fool around and just leave it up.
At least we're talking in that area with them, which we haven't been. Go ahead, Chris, you can probably...
Yeah, we, I think you're hitting right. One of the problems is, it's one thing to write the grant application, it's another thing to find the grants, right? So we have our federal lobbyist, Patton Boggs, and Steve Bonifanti in my office has worked with them at the federal level to identify a myriad of grants that the MDC is eligible, would be eligible for, or which they could make application for. So without too much effort on their part and without costing us any more monies in terms of the retainer we pay, I'll inquire with them as to what might be available to the city for this type of operation and see what I get for response and report back to the board.
They do have a good...
That's what they do.
An infrastructure.
Very good at it.
They've got an infrastructure, as Chris says, that does that and pursues those things, not just for us, for a whole lot of other people relative to that. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to go back to the second comment from Scott regarding these discussions, conversations and so forth, and I believe I heard you say, and I could have misheard, that it was, you used the word mayors, not mayor. And so exactly my question, just to clarify, have we already engaged with that conversation with the member town mayors? Or is that a step later on?
Commissioner, I apologize if I said mayors. We discussed with the mayor of Hartford. The only thing I have, yes, the only thing I have done is sent out the letter, which I have a copy of here somewhere in this pile. About a month ago, I sent out a letter talking about stormwater management authority, and I did send that discussion to all of our towns and mayors and councilmen, councilwoman, to discuss the concept of a stormwater authority at the MDC.
No, we, not only that, we did this and pursued it three years ago as a piece of legislation that would be forming the eight member towns as a stormwater strategy. But the issue is, this is an issue that will affect every one of the eight towns eventually, some at a greater degree than others, but they will, everybody will get their turn. And that was what was raised three years, was it three years ago?
Longer than that, I think.
It was at least three years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember they were all upset over the fact that we were talking about stormwater, and half of them didn't realize they had a stormwater problem then, and that in the future, other people are gonna have it. And so that was raised, and we backed off of that issue. And now with the environmental changes, you can see what's happening to everybody's communities, some greater than others, but it's still, as Scott said, is a regional issue, just like disposal of the existing waste in our sewer system. This is another problem. So that's another alternative that we should be talking to our towns collectively about.
Mr. Chairman?
And who has, Rich? I'm sorry, David, I...
Yeah, we're the, who developed that 50 million?
Commissioner Drake.
Who developed the 50 million dollar number? It seems like a lot of money to do...
Well, the 50 million dollar number was put on the table by the mayor.
Yeah, we have an estimate from our, so we're planning to hire one consultant, CDM, who works for both us and this...
I understand that, but is that 50 million dollars right now, does everybody think that's a real number? It seems like a lot of money to pull some sand away from a pipe.
Haven't seen that river.
Our consultant had said it could be anywhere between 20 and 40. And the mayor had a 50 million dollar number? We don't know what the number is, but we know it's a lot of money.
Yeah, fair enough.
I mean, if, we've had problems for the last five years directly on this, in terms of what was being discharged into that.
I mean, how far are they gonna dredge? I mean, is it like a half mile or a mile?
It's more than a half mile.
It's seven, oh, boy, I heard this number. I want to say 70-some-odd thousand feet. It's miles.
Miles, then?
Yeah, it's miles. And it's behind homes, it's not easy.
It's situated right between Scarborough Street and Woodland.
Okay, so it's a lot more than just pulling some sand away from that 54-inch pipe, then?
Trees are down, I mean, it just hasn't been dredged in...
Permits from the state, from the feds, it's very involved.
But that's gonna be part of the joint agreement between, or the study between the city of Hartford and...
You can't stick five miles of pipe in that. A 54-inch pipe will run it the whole way. Is that cheaper than 55 million, 50 million?
Well, just remember, just remember, as part of our clean water project, the ultimate goal is to clean up the North Branch of the Park River, to turn it back into a recreational river.
Fair enough.
So they don't want to bury it, right? They want it open.
I understand, that makes sense, yeah.
Rich, did you?
That was my same question. Where did the 50 million come from?
Yeah, that was a number that he came up with in the last meeting.
Right.
And Scott did say that we were 20 to 40 million thinking about it, but that's why we're gonna do this study, so we know exactly what... What's that?
Sue, do we have a number, a time on that? Was it?
They said it would take, I'd say 18 months, two years, yeah.
And that's why it's so important, because our planning activity of what we do and how we do it in the separation areas, we really need to understand what the commitments the city has, what our commitments will be. The chairman had mentioned, if they're not gonna dredge the river, we might have to spend more money in putting in outfalls or a pump station. So we need to know that sooner than later.
Just a follow-up question. If it takes 18 months and you're seeking grants...
Your microphone?
If it takes 18 months and you're gonna be talking to the people on the grants, can we pursue a grant without the completed study and come up with some estimates? Or how does that go hand in hand with...
I think you're gonna have to be able to designate what it's, how much you're spending. But again, there's so many programs the feds are banging around now.
But we don't want to miss out because of time. So if you're looking for grant money, do we have to have the full study in hand or you have some preliminary information to pursue the grant? In other words, right now, we have nothing, right? We're starting from zero. You call and there's grants available for 2023, what do we have to show to, for funding? The dollar amounts? Is there a way to figure out something?
So on the study, Commissioner, we are expecting to get a grant from deep, 48% for our portion. I don't, we don't know if deep is gonna give the city 48% grant for their portion. Those are things that have to be worked out with deep and with the MOU. We just don't know yet.
Talking about HUD and FEMA and the other...
Right, different, right.
You're gonna need more detail than just, we're doing a study and we'll let you know what happens, but can we have our money now? You're gonna need more detail than that, Rich.
Remember the study that we did or talked about doing for years on the river, on the Dyke system? And we got into this political arena with the Army Corps that you gotta have the study first before you can apply for the grants, and we went through that forever, and you're right. I mean, that is a possibility that that might happen.
And it's, Chris Stone, it's not a stagnant analysis. It's gonna change over time as monies become available for different things. So it's something you, we'll get a snapshot of what might be available if we were to have a study done and what may be available over time once a study's done.
Is that the term shovel-ready? We're not shovel-ready?
No.
Rick, you're after Boopman.
Does the city have flood commission active now? Years ago, flood commission was a somewhat regional entity. I'm talking about 50s and 60s.
Yeah, but now it is.
And if it is active, they were in charge of basically finding out what is needed, how to maintain and apply for fundings.
Scott Jolson, as far as I'm aware, obviously, by designation of the Flood Control Commission for the city of Hartford, the chief engineer acts as the director of the flood control system, so therefore that is Frank De La Ripa. Frank is engaged in that process, which is great. The chairman of the flood commission is the gentleman who does the...
McGary.
McGary. I don't know if there's any other members of the commission.
The flood commission is sort of wilted, away from what it was 25, 30, 40 years ago. The whole flood system in Hartford, when you start looking at what it's gonna cost to renovate and bring that even up to date, remember, we looked at it initially when we were doing the whole clean water project as an alternative to what we did with the tunnel? And, I mean, there's cars in the thing, there's, you've gotta see what it looks like now. So no one's paying attention to that flood, that flood commission, and they have two people and maybe, I don't think they even have a staff person other than Frank that's involved in it. And they used to have 15, 20 people, and when I was on the city council, was quite a while ago, so that's a good question. Rick, you had a question?
Yes, Commissioner Bush, just a quick question. And this is just for personal clarification, I just want to make sure. So the dredging of the Park River serves two specific purposes. One is that we have to get water out of there anyway as part of the integrated plan, and the second would be specifically for the development of additional low-income housing, right? Those are the two components of it?
If I may, just to clarify, the, right now in this general vicinity, there are three pipes that go to the river. Two of them are MDCs, and one of them is the city of Hartford's. So anybody who's connected to those existing pipes right now are affected by the fact that the river hasn't been dredged. We presented at BPW the other night that these pipes are overwhelmed in a 10-year storm presently. So the two real issues are, yes, we need that waterway to get our stormwater out once we separate it, but prior to us even doing any work, the existing community is being affected, unfortunately, by the fact that the river needs to be dredged. And we've already spent 35 million dollars in the Granby 2-5 area. We spent five years up there separating, and those, that separation work is being affected, not on the sewer side, but on the stormwater side. To get that stormwater out of the community and into the river is being affected because of the fact the river needs to be dredged.
And that's the 54-inch pipe we're talking about?
And the 24 and the 102-inch pipe, correct.
Right, so that they just can't operate in function because of what's in the river, and they're submerged, there's mud and everything else they're in. Commissioner Torres?
I'm sitting here extremely frustrated, and I'll tell you why. You know, this is a timing issue, okay? It's gonna take time to get a study done. It's gonna take time to get the money to get that study done. By the time that study gets done and it goes through all the bureaucratic process, there's gonna be a new administration in Washington. The monies that have been designated today may not even be here down the road in two years. In the meantime, during those two years, we're gonna continue to get major flooding in North Hartford, West End, okay? And the people that are gonna get blamed for that is the MDC. This is a housing development project. It's a misnomer. A Hartford Housing Authority is a creature of the state. It is not a municipal department. It's a creature of the state. It is providing for housing development, affordable housing development, which most of the eight towns and all the other towns don't want in the first place, but Hartford is willing to take it. I'm suggesting that we approach all our member towns and the towns that we provide services for in addition to the member towns to lobby the state legislature and say, you know what, folks? Give us the money today to get that study done so that we can try to get the monies to get the problem resolved, because it isn't even our problem, it's your problem. It's your housing development. These are poor people that are, that nobody else wants in the surrounding area, and we continue to get flooding in North Hartford and the rest of Hartford, and I'm sick and tired of it. The bureaucracy and the foot dragging and the time constraints that are, you know, that are part of this is just incredible. And then we sit here and we have to belabor these issues over and over again, you know, and then take the blame for stuff that, you know, that we don't even have control over for the most part, because it's not even our initial problem. Okay? And then we talk about, you know, Hartford, and why doesn't Hartford do this and Hartford do that? Well, I'll ask the question. How much is our infrastructure? How much is the MDC infrastructure worth in the city of Hartford? And how much, how many, how much of that infrastructure is actually assessed and taxed in the city of Hartford, which provides a service for the metropolitan area?
That's the mayor's argument, too.
You know, so this is the big picture.
Every town has infrastructure.
Every town has infrastructure.
Bloomfield has it, Rocky Hill has it.
Not to the extent, oh, okay, fine.
No, but percentageally, percentageally.
Not to the extent that the city of Hartford has. And this has been, you know, this has been a short-changed issue for years and years and years, and this is one of the reasons why we don't have the kinds of things that should have been done in Hartford to ameliorate or bring up to date the infrastructure, which is never getting done.
Well, I mean, let's be fair. Go back to when we started, the MDC was after the war relative to the expansion of the suburban communities. And you're right, there was infrastructure in place that they plugged into and for a long time used it. But that doesn't get us anywhere, going back and forth on that issue. We've gotta resolve the issue. The bureaucracy is that you got federal money coming in, you got state money coming in, and we've gotta get something done in terms of timing ourselves, so, you know.
I understand that, Mr. Chairman.
It's frustrating, I agree with you, but we're a regional body and we're trying to work that out.
I have almost 30 years in municipal government, you know, so I've been through all of this, the grants and the issues and the politics and all of this kind of stuff. In the meantime, people are hurting, you know... In the meantime, people are hurting, you know, we have issues that we have to resolve, you know, and we're fighting this with one hand behind our back because we have all of these other things. Well, you know, I think we cut, we need to cut to the chase, you know, and see what we can do collectively, you know, as intelligent people looking at the problem, not the symptoms, and say, let's deal with the problem, let's get this resolved, you know.
Further, further discussion? Go ahead, Scott. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Commissioner Payne. Do we have an approximate cost of the study and is Hartford sharing in the cost of that study with the MDC? And then last question would be, would that be under our Clean Water Act?
For us, it would.
The study would be under our clean, not on our budget, but under the Clean Water.
Let me, I, I think we, we said that, that it would be shared by both parties. We will get, go to the state of Connecticut under the Clean Water Fund. We don't know, Scott, what the Clean Water Fund position would be with the City of Hartford, but we recommend that, that they, for their 50% share, try to pursue the Clean Water project. Am I not right in the discussion?
Yes, we're, the, the approximate cost for this study is $800,000, $400,000 each. Two very, two very different, very specific, different tasks. One's dealing with the, the flow of water into the river, both in terms of pipes and in terms of sheet flow, we call it, flowing from parking lots and grass. And then our specific issue is the, what kind of drainage we need for the specific streets that we're separating. So one consultant, $800,000. We're expecting to get 48% grant for our piece. We don't know if the city will get the, a 48% grant for their piece.
And one last question. Is it possible that some of this work could be done in phases so that we can see some results sooner than later?
Well.
So, Commissioner, we, one of the, one of the things we need to know, we've got, we have about $500 million to $600 million worth of separation work in these areas, Blue Hills and the Granby area. It'll tell us when we do our study, what should our, what should our scheduling be? Which project needs to be done first? So, no, the answer is we've really got to get a, I mean, we might get at a point where we can say, okay, we're ready to go and we can, but we really need to get the engineering done on the study side. And we really need to know, are we going to be able to dump this water into the, to the North Branch of the Park River? Or do we have to pump it in? Which could be millions of dollars more than what we expected, right? So there's a lot of work to be done.
Thank you.
Further questions on this issue? Go ahead, Scott. You want to finish up?
Thank you. Real quick, just an update. We've talked about this throughout the last year. I gave an update back in March. We're still waiting. We had talked about the possibility of, of connecting the Hartford Treatment Plant to the, to the grid, to the ISO grid. We've talked about that a couple of times. They thought, first thought was there was a, possibly a $2 million savings if that could happen. And I've reported that, that EverSource has come back and explained to us that there's really three components to your service delivery bill excluding generation, which as we know, generation is, is a separate entity that provides us with our, our power, so to speak. The transmission, it's about $165,000 a, a, a month. We're talking about $68,000, which is the transmission charge. $50,000 is distribution and then other is $53,000. So it's about $165,000. So the only thing that EverSource says we can, if we were able to connect to the transmission lines over at the treatment plant, would be the transmission charge, which is a $68,000. So that's about $600,000 to $700,000 a year. Their expectation is this could be multi-millions of dollars. We got to get approval from ISO, we got to get approval from PURA. They're working with PURA right now. Their attorney's trying to figure out the legalities of can we actually do this? We know, they have told us that you have to get approval from ISO. Typically, ISO does not approve this unless there's an absolute need that you must, you have no other options. But we're waiting and we're, and working with EverSource to try and get a, an answer to that.
They also have to design the system.
Yeah.
They do, would have to design the system.
The way in which, if, if they were to approve this, and we did this work already at the plant, we've done it numerous times with the heat recovery plant, all of the design work, all of the construction costs would be borne by EverSource and EverSource would, we would pay EverSource. So that's the process that they follow. And then in terms of just some good news, and we've talked about this at a couple of meetings, we've collected, as you know, we've been really aggressive since COVID. We hadn't shut off, had a shut-off season for almost two years, almost two and a half years. We did, we created a shut-off list. It created, we usually have 500 accounts per year. We created 4,100 accounts. We have shut off and sent letters to about 574 customers and we've collected about, to date, about 500 grand, 479 grand, and that would be either collections and/or payment plans. So the staff has done a great job in, in really identifying the shut-off list and it's really created a huge influx in revenue from, from, from the, from the 4,100 customers. We've notified, I know we've got Commissioner asking, so I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, can I ask a question?
Commissioner, Sweets.
On what you just said, the 500,000.
Yeah.
Is that over-anticipated what we budgeted to collect? So is that going to be a surplus?
Yeah.
You have a number in your budget, you have how much you think you're going to collect, and then what you did collect. So is it much more than what you budgeted in the budget? So can we expect a 300,000, 400,000 surplus or what?
Yes, Scott Jellison, I'm going to answer this. It's a complicated question. I know you've asked it numerous times. I'm going to point to Bob. But us, we, when we bill out, you know, in a year and we say, we're going to sell X amount of water, we're expecting to collect all of it, right? So that's the easy answer. The tech.
There's actual numbers what we do collect.
Right. And Bob, if you could just answer this, Bob Barron, who's our chief financial officer, how we deal with non-collection rate and how we deal with, if you could just stand up to the mic quick.
Sure.
Bob, thank you.
Actually, this was a similar question that the, the finance committee had posed last week. And I think I had seven or eight follow-up answers that I was going to provide them. But we, when we, when we issue our bills, we recognize the revenue immediately, 100%. And so, so we don't plan on collecting on past due bills because whether it be in the current period or the prior period, we've already recognized the revenue. But on a cash basis, you're right, when the, when the money comes in is of great importance to us, but it's all a balance sheet transaction. The revenue has already been recognized on the income statement. So the shorter answer is we only budget for what we anticipate billing in a given year. We don't budget for collections on past bills from prior years' periods because that's already been billed and recognized as revenue. And the percent we don't collect becomes a liability on our balance sheet.
So it's a full $500,000 plus surplus?
Basically, yes. And, and that, and that 500,000, Commissioner, includes not just actual collection, right? The collection is 200 and change, but we have a commitment from the, the people that we've talked to that will collect that 400 and change.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Bob.
Further questions on that report?
One more, and I'm going to make it really quick. We've talked over the years about different electric programs that we, that we've tried to get involved with. We've talked about solar and all kinds of things. We had a program back in, I can't remember, the 2010, 12, 13 timeframe, which was virtual net metering. And that, by definition, the MDC was excluded from. And we went through the legislation. We tried to, tried to change the language. But basically, that virtual net metering program was a program that basically said after deregulation of 2003 with the ISO utility world, your project, in order to use the term virtual net metering was, you produce power at some location, you use the distribution system that's available to you through ISO, and you use it somewhere else. So in other words, our hydro facilities would produce power and we could use it down at the treatment plant. The problem with that legislation and the, and the virtual net metering as defined was we were not eligible because the project that you're using to produce the power had to be built after 2003. So because our hydro facilities were not, were built in the 80s, the answer was we weren't, we didn't qualify. They have since created a virtual net metering, which is completely different, completely different from what that definition was. And it was basically PURA mandated that EverSource create $30 million roughly of green energy. And a lot of utilities are required to carry a certain amount of green energy in their portfolio. And this is where PURA came in and says, you must do this. So they did it. The, 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 EverSource created a bunch of projects with developers and utilities like us. And we, we, we missed the, the window and we did not get into the project. Because the projects that were listed have not done anything, they haven't actually executed their work because they were really projects that were, you know, theoretical. They weren't, they weren't actually built. PURA reopened a provisional program, which we applied for in April. We actually contracted an RFP and we are now selected as part of this program. We still have to be picked. But the potential for us, if our project is picked, is that we could earn upwards of a million dollars a year with a third, with a, with a developer who's building, and I want to say this, as confusing as it sounds, a developer builds infrastructure somewhere, doesn't have to be Connecticut, couldn't be on the Mass Pike. And they, all they need is a commitment from MDC that we're going to, we're going to award our, in this case, 2.5 megawatts of load at the Hartford plant as part of their submission to PURA and to, and to EverSource. That's all the commitment we have. We've had Chris Stone involved in this from the get-go in terms of what our legalities are, make sure that we didn't in any way commit the board to something. It's literally that simple. We simply sign up and say, yes, you can use our 2.5 megawatts as part of your submission to EverSource. And if that project gets picked, we will make as much as a million dollars. And it escalates downwards, de-escalates, sorry, from, from 100% to 80, to 60, to 40 over the years. It's literally that simple. We were very skeptic of the project. We did a lot of due diligence with, with Kelly Shane and her staff and Bob Barron and Legal. But it is that simple. The, the program is looking for a municipality utility like the MDC to be, it requires, the program requires a municipal partner with a developer. And that's where we come in. So we're hopeful. We're not going to make any promises, but there is a potential for the MDC to make significant money on this virtual net metering program, which is really dealing with solar. People building solar outside, it could be Connecticut, it could be anywhere in the country, but they're using MDC as their, as their partner. So with that, any, that's my, that's my report.
Questions?
Sorry.
Okay.
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
Yes, just a comment. This idea is not new. It's done in other programs.
Yeah.
It works well. It's basically, you're basically selling credits that, that you're allotted and you can sell those credits and then you get money for it. So I think it's worthwhile pursuing and if we can get this, it'd be a great source of revenue.
I've got a question in that. Can't we use virtual metering also for our electricity that we transfer to the other side, not the wastewater treatment facility that we generate? There was a, there was legislation that, I don't know whether we, we were included in it, but allows you to use virtual metering to transfer that back to the, to the, to the grid.
Yeah. So, Scott Jellison, so these programs are really developed by EverSource? And we've actually been successful in getting the solar project at Boquonic. It was a solar project. We won that award from, we, we won the award from, from, from EverSource. So the programs change and the rules change. And for example, to the chairman's point, that, in my definition of true virtual net metering, that program has gone and went. They fund it and then they exhaust the monies and then they don't fund it or they do. But it's really driven by, by EverSource's requirements under PURA to, to have a certain amount of green power. And so we just, we just try to, we just try to benefit from whatever programs out there. And in this case, right now, the only program out there is this virtual net metering and it's related to solar projects built by developers. MDC has no involvement in this, this project. We're, we have, we have no responsibility to do anything.
We're their sponsor.
Right. We're really just a sponsor to make sure that EverSource knows that there's 2.5 megawatts of power that will be available to consume this green energy.
Ray, do you have a question? Anyone else? Okay. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris Stone, District Counsel. Just a couple of things. Scott mentioned the collection effort on the, with the re, rule of the shut-off program. We continue to make progress on our, on our side of things, the non-shut-off accounts. Those are rent receivers, multifamily housing, commercial properties. And we are achieving that point, that, the sweet point where our expenses are zero, our net expenses, because we're having, the lawyers are getting paid by the delinquent customer. I should have a report, I wanted to have a report today for the end of second quarter 2022, but it's not ready yet. I'll have it for you in August or September. They're just making some final touches on that. We have, I've received last week the litigation of the complaint on the, what I'll call the first claim before the State Claims Commissioner on the Hartford landfill discharge fee. It's a 42-count complaint that we're reviewing it in Legal. We're, we're assisting the attorney that handled the State Claims Commissioner file in, in bringing that action. So we should have that filed, I would say, within the next two, three weeks. Obviously, that's very fact-intensive. So it's not only a function of the legal work, but it's also, we have to distribute that amongst MDC engineers and staff for their input as well. We, you did get a copy of the notice we sent on what I call landfill claim number two, which is us taking advantage of that expedited process that, where we got the release to sue on the first claim. We're seeking that same type of relief on the second claim. The difference between the two claims, one is the flat fee of 13 cents per gallon. That's claim one. Claim two is the tiered rate. I think it's 13, 9, 5, depending upon volume. And then we have a third Claims Commissioner action that's been brought about three months ago, plus or minus. That's on the Buckingham Garage, which is unrelated to the landfill. The Buckingham Garage situation is, is one where the state knew of the fee, the state through its contractor paid the fee, and then when the contract was done, the state decided not to pay the fee. So that's pending before the State Claims Commissioner's office. It's not right to go through that expedited process because you have to give the Claims Commissioner time to either act or not act. And if he or she does not act, within two years, we can get that before the expedited process. The Culberk petition for declaratory ruling has been filed. I've confirmed that with their, the DPH's general counsel. They have assigned it to their hearing officer. It should be put down for scheduling within the next two or three weeks. And that's a long-term schedule. I don't mean it's going to be heard in two or three weeks, but it's, it's, as I said when we first filed it, it's a 90 to 120-day period. So we should get some, we'll, we'll get some traction on that. Two other things that we have, I've written to you about. One is a $2.5 million grant that we were able to secure out in Washington. It's a grant for wastewater infrastructure improvements. We've sent not only the application, but we identified projects for which this grant could be used. There was a, and I sent other information to you, about $100 million tranche coming in this federal legislative session. in this federal legislative session. That's not been authorized or appropriated yet. But on the 2.5, it has been. It's been directed to Region One. We've had conversations with Region One just today, in fact, on whether, whether that money can be redirected to a, to pay for a study relating to what, another item on the agenda, which is your creation of the, hopefully the creation of a committee on technology. That issue would be, if you wanted to redirect it, that issue would be referred to that committee and then onto the board. There is a process to change how that money can be used. We got some clarification from the wastewater division of Region One today. It's, in all likelihood, it will require a involvement of our congressional delegation. They're the ones who put the money in for us in the first place. It's not a long process. It's, he estimates it to be a four to six-month process to get that done. But that's if you want to do it. So that's the first decision that has to be made. And then if you, if it's so desired by the committee and by the board, we can move forward with that. The last issue that I want to talk about is an issue that just cropped up early last week, maybe into the, the end of the previous week. This has to do with REA. And this is the company that came to us in March of 2022, March 17th, in fact, 2022. They did a presentation before Commissioner Vincenzo's committee at BPW. And they were talking, wanted to talk about generally this FOG technology or FOG management technology, which I think Scott alluded to briefly in his comments. We received a, let's go back. March 17th, or just prior to, there were some promotional materials that they wanted to distribute to the board at that meeting. That promotion, those promotional materials had several references to the MDC, an MDC logo, an MDC construction initiative, things that really gave the impression that there was a relation, contractual relationship between us and REA. I, with Al Barberata, who's the chief executive officer of REA, we, I'll say whitewashed the brochure, got all references to the MDC out of it, off it. And they did their presentation. And, and he understood at the time, and quite frankly, should, should have understood before the time, but he understood at the time that any reference to, to or implications that there's a agreement between or a relation, business relationship between us and REA is not appropriate. It has a ten, that would have a tendency, as I put in my letter that I'm going to talk about in a minute, to really put a chilling effect on the bidding pool in the event you decide to move forward with such a proposal, in an event you decide to go out to RFP for that, for those services. Fast forward to the last two weeks, we received an email that had been sent to Tom Tyler of the MDC. It was an inquiry from a consulting firm out of Albany, New York, that we happen to do business with as well. I don't know the name of the consulting firm, otherwise I'd share it with you, but I do not know who it was. But it was an email to Tom asking about how, basically, how was it going with the MDC and its relationship with REA? There were some promotional materials that I shared with you as part of my letter that referenced the MDC in three respects. It talked about a groundbreaking of an MDC FOG facility through REA in 2023. And it referenced an operational startup date for a FOG management facility between REA and MDC in 2024. It also referenced that there was a contract between REA and the MDC for a FOG management system. All three of those statements are not accurate. They weren't accurate in March of 2022 at that meeting. They weren't accurate as of last week. It's, they've never been, it's, it's never been the case. So I sent the letter, you received the, and there's a lot of emails going back and forth. I won't bore you with the details. I've sent you copies and there's copies in front of you, the emails back and forth.
Ask a question though on that one, you get to.
Sure. Let me just, I'll just, I'll wrap it up real quick because it's, it's really in, in the letter itself. So I prepared a letter. It was originally drafted by Attorney Bonifanti. I modified it. It went through Kelly Shane in procurement to make sure that she's our FARs officer, at least unofficial FARs officer. So I rely upon her for him, her input on procurement issues. And then I circulated through all the lawyers in my office and we collectively all decided that it was the, the, the strong letter to send to stop this kind of behavior. So that being said, we sent the letter out. I've heard back from Mr. Barberata that he acknowledges the mistake and, you know, he apologizes for making the mistake. I asked him what compelled him to do what he did and, and I really didn't get a, an answer. But that being said, he did offer to retract the statements. He offered to remove the information I just related to you from all his marketing material and all his communications to the public. Again, if a contractor that he's competing with sees that on their website, they're not going to bid, they're not going to put a proposal into the MDC because it's a done deal according to the, the website. So that's my real concern. It's not about REA. It's about making sure that whatever procurement process you may want to go through, that it's fair, it's open, and it's not prejudiced in any way. And I referenced that in the letter as to what I really want to happen. So that all being said, notwithstanding his representations that all that information's going to be gone, he's also spoken to the chairman, he can speak to this, but even as late as today, or late as this morning, that he has hired someone to remove, or had hired someone to remove all the information about the MDC from his materials and communications, and that was accomplished. As of 5:15 today, I went on the website, all the information I just shared with you that is offensive to me is still on the website. So I will speak to Mr. Barberata tomorrow and try to get a timing on when that's going to be gone. He was asked for a, a retract to provide me a statement of retraction for me to edit and approve, in my office to edit and approve. I have yet to receive that retraction statement. So I want to give you an update on that. I'll report in real time, I'll report what happens with it, but you hopefully understand my concern and hopefully, you know, we can't, as I said to Mr. Barberata when he apologized, I can't unring the bell, right? Once it gets out in the public domain, it's out in the public domain. We can do some things to try to minimize the effect. Whether we're successful or not, I suppose only time will tell. That is my report. Be more than happy to answer any questions.
Let me, let me just add on to that. I had a conversation with Mr. Barberata this morning and he told me that he had brought in someone to resolve that issue. And I communicated this morning with Chris and apparently that has not been removed. So he told me that he had positioned someone to do it. And so we're just trying to find out now what happened in between him bringing the person in and what the person, what they did and why it didn't work. And again, as Chris points out, we don't want to restrict ourselves from anybody in the marketplace by the representation that there's some favorable agreement. We do have an agreement, however, with not for biodiesel, but in our FOG, with FOG, was it not right, Chris, that we have with the University of Connecticut?
I'm sorry to interrupt.
And REA.
There was an agreement for survey work done by interns or students at UConn. The, one of the principals of REA happens to be a professor at UConn. He had access to these, these college kids who did a survey of our, I suppose, lack of a better term, FOG production, visiting restaurants and alerting them to the issue and doing a survey and what, what's out there. That was a $25,000 purchase order. It is in suspension at this point.
We had for two years.
It's in, we.
What was it? Wasn't it two years?
Yeah, it was, we suspended it.
It's suspended.
Yeah. But, okay, so. So we're in that program now or we're not with UConn?
Go ahead. Ray, you want to speak?
Program with UConn students now, because I did see the report last year, it was four pages. I don't see where it was any beneficial to us at the time.
The program has been suspended.
Okay. And then why does he say in his reply Friday, REA never told anyone that we had a deal with the MDC regarding biodiesel system, this letter he sent you? And, but on his website, he mentions the MDC and his company.
I, if I might, Mr. Chairman, Chris, Chris Stone. I don't know why he said it. And, and it's clearly not the case, right? I mean, it's, it's on the website. It, it says what it says. And I, I would disagree that, that, with Mr. Barata's statement, but I, I don't know why he would say that. I don't have the motivation.
And that's why he's pursuing that tomorrow relative to, go ahead, Commissioner Torres.
Yes, Chris, what is the, is, I mean, is there a legal remedy for this? And, and also are there any damages that, you know, that accrue to us?
We didn't lose anything.
Because of what, you know, this could potentially do to our bidding process.
Yeah, it's, it's slightly premature at this point because there's, there's a harm to reputation, which is, which is difficult to quantify. You've seen articles, there's a libel case where someone proves their case and they get a dollar's worth of damages. So I, it's hard to really put a number on the financial harm to the MDC.
Or to win a.
And legally, what we can do is so far what we're doing, right? Asking for, admonishing him for, for what's done or the company. It's not about Al, it's Barberata, it's about the company. There are individuals who may call the shots, but the claim is against the company. Seeking a retraction, public retraction on, on the website, removing the information, which still hasn't happened, which I'm at a loss as to why it hasn't happened yet, but that's the third remedy. And then we have to really, if we decide, you know, we may have some additional costs, for example, on procurement, because we have to do a more robust advertisement, for example, and may have to include within our advertisement the fact that what you might have seen there does, is not reality. There may be a whole bunch, and, and I'll, you know, defer to Kelly for, for that type of, that type of work. But we haven't, remember the, the, the directive of this board in BPW? We're not going to spend any more money, any money on the technology unless it's approved by the board. We're not going to enter into any, any, you know, issue any RFPs until such time as any technology, including the technology from REA that's now in its construction phase in Danbury. Let's see, not just whether, when you turn the lights on, whether they go on, but whether over a period of time, whatever that might be, that's for the engineers to decide, not me, but some period of time where they prove that they can do what they say they're doing. And that's about that type of technology. I will tell you that I've looked on a website and I've talked to the chairman about it. There's other FOG-type applications that deal with FOG management, FOGs is fats, oil and grease is, I'm sorry, but deal with processing and treating and creating biodiesel fuel from FOGs, oil and grease. Now, REA has a patent on one process to do that. Not on, not on just doing it, but just a process to make it happen. There's others out there too. So one thing that this does cry out, at least for me, is that any thought of doing a, and there's, hasn't been a thought in Legal, by the way, but any thought of doing a sole source because of this patent of process is, is not advisable. And, and if it comes back to Legal, we have already written an opinion that this is not a sole source type endeavor. And we've worked with that through, through Kelly and Steve Bonifanti in my office. This really puts it as, as ill-advised to even go down that route. And, and you know what? Better for everybody. Better for everybody, including REA, to do it in an open process. I just want to make sure that the university, universe of contractors that could reply to an RFP is vibrant. That's, that's my main concern.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Commissioner, or, Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of questions on the reports that we've been given today. Number one, I work on websites. This would take less than two minutes to be able to get down and it's still up there right now as of seven o'clock tonight. And now this calls into question everything I see on this website, whether or not it is true. If they're willing to go ahead and put this out there and say that they are doing these things for the MDC, I question all the other information that I've gotten here and the presentation that we had. This is unacceptable and it's unacceptable that this has gone on this long. This is just, this is outrageous that this has gone on this long. So I would hope that we wouldn't, that this would be corrected quickly and that we won't see this company back before us for quite some time because I don't trust them at all at this point. On a couple of other things not related to that, Mr. Jellison, sorry, this is Commissioner Mandik, for those who are on the phone. I'd just like to know if we have any information about DEPs and whether or not they fix the pump at the landfill? Have we started to see any flow come back through yet? And is the pump fixed?
They haven't spent the money yet. I apologize. I don't know if they've actually fixed it. They were supposed to fix the pump on May 22nd. They were, they committed to us that they would notify us as soon as the pump was operational. We have engaged them, as you remember, back in 2018. We were arguing, fighting with, with DEP over getting access to the discharge, which occurs into our system, but on the landfill property. And what we wanted to do was have a meter, an RF meter, like we put on every person's home, so that we can monitor that flow electronically. We have been working with Legal to, to get that MOU together so we'd have access to the property. I don't know, I don't know, Tom, are you aware at all if they, we haven't, I haven't been notified. Dave, do you know if, if the meter, the pumps have been operational?
Last email we received from them was an update saying they were going to get up in the next day or two and they have not confirmed that.
Yeah, they did. So Dave Ruddy, who's the director of operations, so we are waiting for, we are waiting for DEP to notify us that the pumps are operational. That, that was the agreement that they committed to us. We have not heard yet.
If you don't mind, if we could just reach out and ask a question to see whether or not.
Could we go through the chair, please?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair, if we could, if you could ask Mr. Jellison to go ahead and contact DEP, that, I think that would be wise of us to know when those pumps are through. And then just one last question, Mr. Chair, if I could, through Mr. Stone.
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Stone, you mentioned the $2.5 million that we received. Was this federal earmark money that we received this through and is that 2022 money?
It's the consolidation act of 2022. It is, was, they revived the earmark process in, in Washington. It is an earmark, but it comes with a process, an implementation process, which Region One in Boston is developing. They just sent out last Friday the implementation guidelines, which I'll be more than happy to forward to the, I'm still going through them, but I'll be more than happy to forward them to the commissioners. And they're a general roadmap for how you access the funds. There's more work to have. So when you, when you say the 2.5 that we received, we haven't received anything yet.
I get it. No, designated.
And you know the process, right.
Yes, I totally get it.
Yeah, you know the process.
And again, Mr. Chair, just as a follow-up to that, if you can just know, I'd just like to know, was this just money that we were granted? What, could you describe to me a little bit about what this was, what the 2.5, when we receive it, what the project is? Or was it designated specifically for anything? What, how do we see spending this money?
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
The Chris Stone District Counsel. So we got wind, you know, we talked earlier to Commissioner Torres about, we have federal lobbyists that look for this grant, these grant opportunities. And our engineers look for these grant opportunities too. They're in, in, whether it's through NAQA, AMWA, you know, our organizations that we deal with. And we got, we're prized of this available grant through, for wastewater, in our, our case wastewater infrastructure improvements. The grants are limited in size to $2.5 million. There's approximately 800 million in the consolidation, Consolidated Act of 2022 that is, is the total of the earmarks. Half is on wastewater, half is on water. So it's about 400 million apiece that is available, not to us. We're, again, limited to 2.5 as a cap. We got wind of the, became aware of the grant. We identified nine projects that were either, either in the, I won't say shovel-ready, at least not all of them, but at least in the queue and that were our wish list of where we could spend that money. of where we could spend that money. These are what are called capitalized grants. So there's some capital investment that has to be made, not only by... Through the grant, but also a 20% local match. And there could be another match through SRF funds, et cetera. But it's 20% from the receiving entity, which in this case would be the MDC. So, for example, if you get a grant for $2.5, you also have to add $500,000 in your own money, 20% as your contribution. So we put this together. We got approved for waste... In the act itself, wastewater infrastructure improvements. And that is pretty general, I grant you. And of the nine projects, I think, Tom, Tyler, correct me if I'm wrong, I think most of them are wastewater-related projects.
All of them are.
All of them are. And there were two projects that are identified. I know that my number four, which is the cake beds, and number nine, which is the incinerators generally, that we identified. I was asked to inquire of Region One whether that designation for those projects can be shifted to monies for studies on new technologies. And that was the response I gave earlier in my presentation, that there is a process to get there, but the process is going to involve, if approved tonight, the Committee on Technology and ultimately the Board, as to whether you want to relocate or re-designate those funds. And the process would also involve action by EPA Regional, Boston, Region One, and in all likelihood, our congressional delegation. This was put in by Senators Murphy and Blumenthal, and get their involvement. And that's not a complicated process, at least according to the gentleman from Region One that I spoke with and that the chairman spoke with. But it's a process that would take some amount of time, four to six months to effect.
Could I answer relative to the issue of the biodiesel? We had these conversations that our attorney outlined relative to how we would be able to put something out like this to the public, the biodiesel issue. And I believe he has characterized that correctly, that it wasn't to be hung on a patent, that we... Chris, was it... Wasn't what you said. It was not a sole-source bid. And I think it was Steve Bonifanti did the research on it. We knew how that worked.
Well, we... I'm sorry for interrupting, but we did know how that worked. That was three or four months ago.
Internally.
But and there's been discussions about, well, about it being a patent and maybe that could fit into this sole-source thing. That hasn't changed my mind.
No, I'm saying that that was dispelled relative to the research that was done by Mr. Bonifanti, Attorney Bonifanti. And ultimately, in coordination with Kelly and our people, we said that that would not be a process. There was another process that we would follow. That was first issue. Second issue was the technology itself and the patent is basically based on 5,000 gallons of biodiesel brown... I'm sorry, brown greases that were converted to biodiesel. And according to what was told to us, the brown diesel... I'm sorry, the brown greases are very difficult to convert into biodiesel. So that was an issue. The position that I raised was the 5,000 gallons does not represent a commercial test. A commercial test would be that there was a functioning organization, similar to what will happen in Danbury, that was producing several million... I think there's several million... A couple million gallons of biodiesel off of this technology. And as far as I was concerned, and we recommended to the Board, was until there was a commercial demonstration that we would not enter into or discuss any finished business, but we listened to what they said. They came in, they talked to the Board, and they talked to the Committee on Public Works. So the bottom-line issue was they know explicitly what the position of the MDC is. And that's why, what, two and a half weeks ago, we went down to... Scott, myself, and Chris went down to Danbury to see physically, were they talking about process or about a process that may work? Physically, there is in place a building, a series of... A series of... Their process. It's a processing... The only thing that wasn't involved was they didn't have the sledge lines in place. They had the concrete done. We looked at it. We spent, what, an hour down there? Went through it. So that's where it stands right now in terms of MDC. Does it work? Does it work commercially? And if it does, then we would look at whether the technology be approved. It'd have to go to the Board. It'd have to go back to the Committee. The Committee... And then we would need outside validation, not just ours, that what they're doing would comply with and protect us, because obviously, us being a public agency, we have obligations to bondholders and everybody else, as well as our constituents. So that's the process of biodiesel. Whether they said they had any agreement with us or didn't, there is no agreement, except one that we talked about, was the agreements we had on the...
Yukon Students.
Yukon Students. And that was the extent of it. The conversation I had this morning was, did you take it off of the website and everything? I was told... So Scott... Scott, Chris is following that up right now.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Chris.
Whether they said or didn't say that we had an agreement or one could interpret that as being a fact or not a fact, the fact of the matter is that on their website, they cite a groundbreaking for an MDC facility on REA's website in 2023 and an operational date of a FOG facility for the MDC with REA in 2024. Both those statements, they certainly should have known, I would suggest, in fact, no, were not true. And that's what I'm dealing with. I'm not... It's not about the technology for me. It's not about where they are in their construction. But it's about what effect, if any, that's going to have on our ability to have a fair, open procurement process.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I just like to add, so yes, the chairman mentioned, we did go down, as we talked about numerous times. I know Commissioner Payne asked to have a tour of this facility. And we haven't scheduled that yet, but in anticipation of that, we asked to go down and see for ourselves what's going on down there. And as the chairman mentioned, there was... There is a building. There is a FOG-receiving pump station adjacent to the building. And there is, you know, a significant amount of equipment in the building. They're waiting for lots of controls. They're waiting for other components to finalize the removal of water from the biodiesel. They had suggested to us at the time there were anywhere from six to eight weeks from being complete. I don't pretend to know if that's true or not, but that's what they represented. The issue for me is the presentation that was given to this board and to me, because we've had lots of discussions, I have two issues. One is, does it work? Can it produce biodiesel? And the other question is, does it make sense for MDC to get involved in biodiesel production at our plant? That's two different questions. But the concern that they presented, or what they presented to us, was that the Danbury... When they did a pilot project in New Haven, it was at the New Haven Wastewater Treatment Plant. And they literally had a skimmer, belt skimmer. It looks like an oversized belt sander a carpenter would use in his plant. And that would actually take the fats, oils, and grease out of the influent. So when we talk about sewer coming into a plant, it's influent. When we treat it and we pump it to the river, it's effluent. So the influent coming in is belt-skimmed in New Haven. And they were producing... I think they produced five gallons a week, or whatever it might be, in biodiesel from that. It moved towards the Danbury project. And what they presented to us was that they were going to use that same belt-skimmer system to take the influent and to take trucks coming in, dumping yellow and/or brown grease from restaurants and that. So there's a... There were two components to this. Because what they sold to the presentation to BPW was that we're the large... As we know, we're the largest treatment plant, where 80 million gallons of sewer a day permitted on a wet day 200, was they were going to use that same technology that they developed as a pilot in Danbury, which is 300,000 gallons a year of biodiesel. And they were going to use that experience to bring to the MDC's project and possibly do the same thing that they did at Danbury. My problem with that is, what I saw at the facility and what they gave us a video that outlined, you know, what they were doing there, was that the only receiving... FOG receiving as part of their product at Danbury is the pumped-in, trucked-in, yellow and brown FOG, not an influent pipe that's piped into the system. So my point was, we all said, we're going to watch and see and see if this actually works. And that's part of their... That's part of their patent, you know?
If you look into this, though, it works, okay? It works around the world. It works... There's plants that have been in operation for 10 years, okay? And that's why I asked to have the creation of a technology committee, so that we could do Zoom calls with companies from North America. To, you know... And I don't know why we're talking about it tonight.
I'm just responding to what we presented.
Let's not get back and forth. Let's, one at a time. Go ahead.
Yeah. So we committed to the Board that we were going to go and visit. We did. Chris raised his legal issues. I'm raising my technical issues with what they're doing in Danbury. And what they're doing in Danbury is not what they represented they were going to do in Danbury, because that was going to come back and say, if we did 300,000 gallons a day, a year, in Danbury by taking FOG out of those waste stream coming into the plant, we're going to do 5 million gallons a year at the MDC. So I don't pretend to know if that's... All's I know is what I saw and all's I know is what they presented in their video. But what they presented did not suggest at all that their system is taking FOG out of the waste stream coming into the plant. And if that's true, then this FOG facility could be built anywhere. It doesn't have to be built at the treatment plant. And most of them are, as you know, Commissioner Sweets. What they proposed... So anyways, I'm just trying to present to you what we saw in our walkthrough.
That's why, number one, I mean, that's why I want a technology committee, so we can look at plants around the country, okay? Around North America. But also, you want to look at companies that are public companies. This is a private company. I can't look at their books.
Right.
I don't know the science part of it.
Right.
But I do know how to read a balance sheet. And I can read balance sheets on companies that are profitable for over 10 years in this field, okay? So there is possibly a opportunity for the MDC to look at other technologies. And I think that's why you need a small committee that's willing to come in a couple of times a week, if that's what it takes to look at, you know, possible technologies. Because like I said, water is not going to pay our bills. Wait until next month, when they come in with the contract. It's going to cost us close to $3 million more in salaries just for next year. So thank you. Okay. Are there any further questions of the Chief Executive Officer's report? Commissioner Taylor.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The... There's a remedy to this issue. And that is basically what you do, is that when you enter into any discussions with anyone, any companies in the future, you basically have a non-disclosure agreement. And that agreement states very clearly that basically, your discussions are confidential. There is not to be any publicity or any statements to the effect that there is some kind of relationship until that relationship is formally entered. People have informal discussions. I mean, that's how deals get done. So, I mean, we're going to have to talk to people. We're going to have to look at things. But we can basically structure, with the help of our legal staff, structure the context within which those discussions will be taking place. So, you know... And once again, the idea is that you're having a talk or a series of discussions to decide whether or not there is a goodness of fit and whether or not, whatever it is you're looking at, does what it says it's supposed to do. Because if it doesn't, no harm, no foul. We spend a time and effort, but we walk away. But you're still within the confidentiality agreement. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Are there further questions, again, of the Chief Executive Officer's report? If not, let's move on. Item number nine, creation of a committee on technology, recommended action, receive the report and adopt the resolution. Is there a motion?
We'll move the resolution.
Again, we've gotten deep into several other things that we're talking about. I think this makes a lot of sense to have a small committee or a lot of technologies. The world is changing dramatically. I think the whole question of how we're going to deal with PFAS, no one knows. We haven't seen promulgation of regulations, but we know that it's real. We know that it's going to impact us, both on the water side and the sewer side. It's going to require some kind of technologies to resolve that issue, to resolve several of the issues, carbon, and a whole bunch of things that are coming at us. And ultimately, I thought that it made sense that we have a committee that looks at the technology. If the technology makes any kind of sense, it gets referred back to the Board. If the Board thinks it makes sense, they would refer to the appropriate committee of cognizant, deal with it, see what happens, and then move it back to the Board. It at least expedites that process. Work with the staff, discuss it with the staff. If there needs to be outside involvement on any case, it would have to come back to the Board. That committee could spend no money, allocate no money without direction of the Board. And the staffing would be to work with our existing staff to deal with technology as it comes in and then distribute it back. If the Board feels it makes sense for further review by the Committee of Cognizant, in this case, whatever it would be, water or sewer, because it's going to happen on both sides as we move down the road. Commissioner Payne.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The resolution that's in our packet doesn't talk about not spending any money. So I have some concerns that it's not clear in the resolution that there will be no spent money from consultants or attorneys until the Board approves it. So I would like something amended in the resolution to cover that, if I could, please.
Do we have an amendment to that effect from the Chief... Our legal staff?
I have a couple of questions, too.
Do you want to put the amendment in and then ask the question?
I think you stated it just fine. And we can add that to the resolution.
Very good.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
You need a second, and then you can...
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye of the amendment.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, that language is consistent with the motions that were approved back in the fall of 2021 by the board and by BPW in January, January 10th, 2022, so...
There would have to be action by the board for any committee to spend any kind of money.
Have we spent any money?
No.
This year?
On this? No.
On this South Meadows?
Not this year.
No money's been spent on attorneys or counselors, or consultants for the South Meadows?
If I might, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
South Meadows is, could be any one of a number of things. If you're talking, this is the Technology Committee issue.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I don't think, if I may, that any money's been spent or incurred for the technology, for the technology.
For the technology. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Hi, this, Commissioner Mandick, just a quick comment on this, and I've talked to the chairman about this. While I'm in favor of these discussions, I believe that these types of discussions would be better off suited under the Strategic Planning Committee. Doing a quick analysis today, if you look at the committees that we have at MDC, I'm trying not to have duplication of effort on this. We have, one, seven committees that range from zero to seven meetings in the past five years. This includes Community Affairs, Policy and Plan, Strategic Planning, Revenue Audit, Riverfront, and Regional Planning. These go from zero to seven meetings in the past five years. I think we're just continually adding committees. I believe something like this technology, research, development, belongs under Strategic Planning. And I think that that's where the appropriate thing, where these discussions should take place to be brought to the board.
Further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I didn't hear what... Can you?
Do you want a roll call?
Who wants a roll call?
No, I'm asking Julie Price. Did you know who the yeas and nays were?
If you want a roll call, we can do one.
That's up to the chairman.
I think that the chair's comfortable that there was a favorable vote on that. I asked if there was any, is there anyone opposed?
Yeah, nay.
There is one opposed. The rest are not.
I'm opposed.
Two.
Two.
I think we need to have a separate committee, in my personal opinion.
Then you're four.
Then you're four.
That's what she said. She said she wants it part of the Strategic Planning Committee. Then she just said...
Right.
That was my comment. I did not propose it as an amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, the amendment, it's been amended. This is the main motion. This is the motion as amended.
That's your acceptable...
Okay. Thank you.
Tell you, you're on the committee.
That's what I said. That's what I said. No, I want another committee.
Go ahead, Rick.
Commissioner Bush here. I mean, I don't know if I'm getting ahead of myself as far as the people that are on the committee, but this is an open committee. Anyone can attend it.
Anybody can attend it. There's going to be no, I think you wrote it, no more than eight?
No, it's, it's, it is what it is.
Whatever it is to add on would have to be, come back to this board. In other words, the resolution for the committee, according to our bylaws and according to our legal, is that there has to be a designated number, and consequently, the board has to agree to the number and the people that have been proposed.
And that number is currently six people?
Six.
Six.
But we could come back to add to that.
Yes, so anyone can attend the meeting. They just can't vote? Or they can't...
Yeah, you can attend the meeting.
It's just like every other meeting, sub-meeting.
Question of getting a quorum when we meet. You know, if you have 10 or 15 people on it, you got to have...
A quorum of seven.
Would be a quorum of what, three here?
Three.
And quorum is based on the percentage of people, two-thirds.
Okay. Item number 10, Board of Finance, consideration and potential action regarding approval for state of Connecticut finance cleaning water funds, 728C. Is there a motion to adopt?
Move it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. This is John Myrtle. Item 10 is Bureau of Public Works supplemental assessments.
Right, number 10.
Number 10.
10.
Right.
Yeah. Board of Finance, consideration and potential...
No, it's 11.
11. There's a new one.
I've got what's in front of me.
Is there any potential action, establishing levies, supplemental assessments?
I'm sorry, 10. Okay. How come it wasn't, it wasn't added to this one? Okay. 10, Bureau of Public Works, consideration and potential action regarding establishment of levies, supplemental assessments against... Can we take these, John, together, or, together, or do they have to be individual?
Together.
Yes, it could be all consolidated.
They can be, okay. A, 35 Lewis Street Hartford?
36.
Let me put my glasses on. That might... 36 Lewis Street Hartford, Connecticut, 38-42 Elm Street Hartford, Connecticut, 50 Morgan Street Hartford, Connecticut, 170 Ridge Road, Weathersfield. Is there a motion?
Move the resolution for all four.
Removed and seconded. Scott, who's?
These, if I may, these are just, yeah, these are just supplemental assessments for changes in use of the property. It's not unlike the process we went through with 777 Main Street not too long ago. We had a case that went over to Supreme Court. We were victorious on our ability to make these assessments, and this is part of that process to finalize that.
Does anybody have a question on individual properties? The motion is A through D. Are there any questions relative to any specific property? If not, motion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That's an aye. Okay. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 11, Board of Finance, consideration and potential action regarding, A, authorization to issue general obligation bonds not to exceed $100 million; B, authorization of reallocation proceeds from 2019 general obligation bond issuance.
So move the resolution.
Again, before we move the resolution, John, isn't that, shouldn't it be, A, shouldn't they be in reverse? Aren't we reallocating first and then adopting the $100 million?
The reallocation is for 2019 bonds. The authorization for the $100 million is for new bonds.
I know, but it doesn't matter which one we do, or can we do them together? Can that be a concern?
The order doesn't matter. I guess I would recommend voting on these separately.
Okay, fine.
Mr. Chairman, just to let everybody know, these were voted unanimously in finance.
I was going to ask for that after we...
I'm sorry.
Okay.
So moved A.
We're going to move A. It's moved and seconded. Is there discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Again, question on A. I should have asked this before. The authorization of the $100 million is that that would go out to a sale sometime in late August or early September?
We're going to have our ratings in early August. About two weeks later, it'll be a competitive sale. And then, two weeks later, we'll have the closing where the money comes in the door. We should have the money before Labor Day, by the end of August.
Okay. Just for everybody's knowledge, Andrew.
Mr. Chairman, do you have...
Commissioner Raddle.
Do you have any idea of what we're looking at for a rate nowadays with the newest interest rates going up the way they are?
You know, the things that affect the rates, of course, are the economy and everything you read in the paper, but it also has to do with the supply and the demand. Are there a lot of redemptions? So there's a lot of money in the market to be spent, where they're looking for the quality credit, like we are, a double A. So I really, I really can't guess other than to say, last year's August issue and November issue, we got about 2% on both of them. August was GO and November was revenue, ballpark 2%. And the only thing I could say is I'm pretty confident it's going to be higher this year. I just can't say how much. But we will come back with our municipal advisor after the sale. It's scheduled now for August 16th, and we will report on how well we did.
Thank you. Okay. Item B, authorization, authorization to reallocate proceeds from the 2019 general obligation bond issuance. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Taken. Been moved and seconded. Commissioner? Chairman, Commissioner, relative to your report?
Yes, this, this item was also unanimous by the Finance Committee.
Aye.
Are there any questions? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item 12, consideration and potential action regarding acceptance, acceptance of bid and approval of sale for invitation to bid on number 2022B-17, sale of 705 Keeney Street, Manchester, Connecticut, to the town of Manchester. Is there a motion?
I'll move that. Second.
Okay. Scott, are you going to take this?
I'll do it.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's all right.
This is attorney.
Kristone, District Counsel. This is the property. That was the remainder of the property we held in Glastonbury/Manchester. Used to be an old part of the Town of East Hartford waterwork system. We inherited it when East Hartford became a member. As you recall, we sold 560 some-odd acres to the town of Glastonbury a few years back. This is that remaining 27 acres, which is just north of that in Manchester. The Town of Manchester appraised the property in 2016 at $95,000. There's an appraisal in 2020 at $100,000, and the town presently is carrying a value, fair market value of $231,000 in its, through its assessor's office. We went out to, we gave the town an opportunity to purchase the property, which is their right to have a right of first refusal per our charter. They indicated an interest. They had to go through their Planning and Zoning Commission under 8-24 approval. They went through their Open Space Acquisition Committee that approved it. And then just, it was about to go to the Board of Directors just before the November 2021 municipal election. And the mayor at the time thought it best to, rather than have an old council or old Board of Directors bind a future board, let it roll until they get elected. Well, as it turns out, they, a new Board of Directors got in, they decided not to pursue the purchase. Pursuing to your direction, and I think through Commissioner Sweetsie's committee at the Water Bureau and Board of Finance with Commissioner Salemi and this board, we were directed to issue a request for bids, basically an open auction. The highest bid would win, highest reasonable bid would win. We did just that. The bids came in from, we had several people or entities that took out bid packages. This was the only bid we received. It's $216,000. It's subject to the approval of this board. There's a due diligence period on behalf of the town, but we anticipate, if it's approved tonight, to close within 91-plus days. They got a 90-day due diligence period. So I think that it's a fair price. It was done in open, an open procurement. Everyone in the world had an opportunity to bid on it, and I would suggest you approve it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, just a question through you, Mr. Chairman. Are we using our own staff for closing purposes?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Sweetsie?
I just believe it's a very fair price, because probably around a year ago, when the pension fund sold it back to the MDC, we only received about $80,000, so, the pension. So, and that's what we had it appraised at approximately that time. So we got a fair price, the pension fund, and we're getting a good price, $200,000.
That was based on assessed value, wasn't it?
Well, the pension fund, the pension fund was a little different, because we had an agreement, I'm sorry, Chris Stone, District Counsel, very quickly, we had an agreement. The agreement dictated the price. We paid the price per the agreement. This was, is a couple of years later. The markets changed, and the town, they could, they could have bid anything. They could have, we were going to accept a lower number back in 2021. They decided to bid 216, so that's, that's...
Very fair.
Commissioner?
Yes. How much are we going to save on property taxes?
$10,000.
$10,000 a year, approximately?
A year.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner?
I just want to be clear, I want to be clear. This is not going back to the pension fund, is it?
Going to the MDC.
This is going to the general fund.
General fund. All right, thank you.
Further, further questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item 13, Personnel Pension and Insurance Committee consideration and potential action regarding transfer of OPEB funds from Webster Bank cash account to Wilmington Trust. Is there a motion?
So move the resolution.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Bob?
Sure. This was first presented to the board in your June 6th meeting, and we spoke about how we hold the OPEB funds. OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits, other than pensionable benefits. And it's primarily the health insurance promises we make to our retirees. So we have $15.1 million in Webster's bank account. That's a cash account we use to pay the bills. And we had, this is at the end of 2021, about $800,000 in the Wilmington Trust account that was established to actively invest these funds. So the, the, there was a great deal of concern on why, if you're putting a certain amount of money into the cash account every year to pay anticipated bills, why did that balance grow so much over time? And the fact of the matter is, is all the research we've done, is that the estimates for what those bills were, that was guided by our actuaries, what they told us the pay-go amount would be, was way too conservative. And so, so we put in more money than we paid out in benefits, and so there was a balance that accrued in our cash account. But remember how I began the conversation? They're both assets of the OPEB fund. One just happens to be in cash, and one is being actively managed. So when we presented this, there was a motion saying, hey, let's, let's take some of that money out of that cash account and put it into that account that David Lee is actively managing for us with the HAB. And I believe that there's at least $5 million that could be transferred over and actively managed. But that, that was what the proposal was, is to let's get, at least initially, $5 million put over into Wilmington, have it actively managed. And then, when the full reconciliation of what should be in that cash account is concluded, and we're very close, we're going back and forth with Anthem on some of their reporting that's been on our side, just to let the council know, we have not stopped working on this. We have reconciled three and a half years' worth of weekly data from Anthem, and we have tied all of our records to the dollar. And now it's back on Anthem to reconcile their reporting that they've provided to us. So we will come back to the board, and we will have a full recommendation for that $15 million that was, 15.9, excuse me, 15.1 million in the cash account. We'll come back really soon. But in the interim, there was a proposal that we move $5 million from the cash account into Wilmington. I think it's, it's fine. I think there's plenty of money. There's no way that we don't have at least $5 million that could move over.
What, Commissioner Sweetsie?
Yeah. We basically got $15 million.
Because we got...
Because it's been three years. It even gets better, because in the first five months of this year, which Bob just gave me today, because I requested this, we've only spent $2.1 million, which we budgeted $10,700,000. If you take the $2.1 million for the five months, it comes out to about $5 million for the year. So we budgeted 10. We're going to have another 5. Even transferring this 500 is going to leave us 1,500. So we've overcharged in this account.
Right.
$15 million.
$15 million. We've overcharged our ratepayers and our towns by that much over the past four years, when this year is done. So I think the $5 million, we've given our account in OPEB, which is tremendous. I mean, it builds $5 million like that. We had 1.8, I believe, as of today, because I just got it from the HAB today.
Yes.
You had $5 million. We got 6.8 now being managed. In this $15 million that nobody knew about until Bob founded, I don't know, a month, two, three months ago, whatever it was, we're getting 0% interest on. So I'm hoping to use, over the next two or three years, using that extra money, once he gets it all straightened out, we know exactly what we have, to reduce the budget for the towns and the water side, the ratepayers. I mean, this is going to be tremendous. I mean, this is going to be tremendous, you know, it's going to help us a lot. And the other great thing is, Becky, the 10 point, $10,701,000 we've been putting in, Becky has reworked her numbers in saying, this year, we approximately only have to put 7.8 million in. So, we're going to have, just right there, we're going to have almost a $3 million decrease in the budget item. So, Bob did a great job finding this money, now we just got to figure out, I know he'd like to give it all to OPEC, I think we got to give it back to our ratepayers, because they're the ones that paid the bill. And we're still putting 5 million plus, so.
And they're going to be the ones.
It's a great fine, it's just how we use it.
Sure.
We'll disagree. But it goes back to PP&amp;I first, before it comes to the board.
Further discussion? Al?
Mr. Chairman, this was unanimously approved at PP&amp;I.
Okay. Are there any further questions on the proposed action of the board?
No, thank you.
Is there someone on the phone that's asking a question? Nope. Okay, if there's no questions, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Okay. Find the rest of this thing here. Okay, item 14, consideration and potential action regarding 2006 MDC study titled Riverfront South, an energy-independent community. What's the recommended action?
This was, if I might, Mr. Chairman, Chris Stone, District Counsel, this was asked, this item was asked to be put on the agenda for this meeting. There was a discussion at the last board meeting about whether or not the board itself took a position on the closure of the airport. The study that's referenced in the agenda indicates, in the balance of the study, which you've all received a copy of, a closure of the airport, and I think some members want an opportunity to have the board take action, or not, on whether that in fact is their position.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, basically saying that the MDC Commission Board has never taken a position for or against the closing of the airport.
I don't know.
Because, and, that's the basic motion, and the reason why is because on May 1, Nick Salemi sent us a bunch of editorials, which I have on my phone, anybody wants to see them.
Okay, Ray, first, let's make the motion, the motion, so we all understand the motion. The motion is to.
Basically state that the MDC Board has never taken a position to close or, you know, to remove the airport, for or against, we've never made a position at all.
Okay. That's the motion before us.
I can't speak.
I'll second that.
Right.
And the reason why is because of a number of the editorials have, over the last few years, and the current keeps saying that the MDC is pushing for the closure of the airport. Some people are in favor, some are against, but we have never, at least this board here, present sitting board, has never taken a position. Now, if we want to take a position, I'm not against that, one way or the other, this is just to say, we have not taken a position. To make the editorial, then, I would, in my discussion, I'd like to have Nick do an editorial to the current, stating that the MDC has never, you know, a lot of these editorials are a little misleading, people just making statements, thinking, because we have talked about it, but we really have never taken a position. Let the public know, we have not taken a position, one way or the other.
I think basically that's, we did never pass a resolution or anything of that nature to, am I right, Chris?
That's correct.
Right. Individual commissioners may have taken a position.
That's fine.
To close it, but the recommendation, even in the 2006 study, all it was, was a proposal that could be done on a site, and it was an issue that we didn't take, we never voted to close the airport or anything of that nature, because that's not our responsibility. Whoever would do that, the state of Connecticut, one, would have to close it, and two, the city of Hartford would have to make any zoning changes or recommendations on a piece of property like that, none of which we have any authority over. Rich?
Could you read the resolution again?
Let me just state it again, that the MDC Commission has never voted for or against the closing of the Brainerd Airfield.
Don't you have to be more specific that this, you know, because I don't know what happened 20 years ago, if somebody, if the, you know, is there historically, we've never voted?
I think it would be better to leave it that this commission has never.
Right.
Okay, the present commission.
Present commission.
The present commission's fine with me.
Yeah, because I can't go for what happened 30 years ago.
So, it will.
But we have legal staff that has told us for the last 20 years, we've never taken.
I'm sorry for interrupting, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead, Chris.
Chris Stone, District Counsel, I think the safe, I've called the records, others have, and I couldn't find any formal action of any board of commissioners of the MDC, however constituted, taking any action on, for or against the closure of the airport, or any formal action endorsing this development plan. That being said, the safer course is to merely state that this, this commission has presently constituted, does not take a position on either the closure of the airport or the development plan that's identified in the agenda, period. And I would just, and in fairness to the press, this is a report that was distributed back in 2006, it was distributed to the editorial board of the Hartford Current, it's been distributed since that time, as recently as tonight, by giving a copy to Judy Allen and to Joe Shereko. It's out there in the public, and it provides for, it's entitled, MDC Plan, it provides for the closure of the airport. That's where the confusion lies, or lied, and you're clearing that up tonight. So, what better way to do it than actually stating a motion as I've just read?
Further discussion? If not, no objection to the change in the amendment to this, so we'll incorporate them together. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Opposed? Fine, passes.
Could we now have, Bill, could we have Nick or one of Scott's staff write an editorial to the Hartford Current, so possibly it gets printed, that the motion, basically, you know.
We'll put something together.
I mean, I know it's only people that are writing, I'm just reading them as I'm sitting here.
It's the same five people.
You know, but just to state, so people do read it, read the current.
Okay, can you, you can do that with the.
Yeah. Yeah, Scott can just do it, we don't need much.
Scott can do it. Commissioner Payne?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, could District Counsel tell us, or Scott, have we incurred any expenses on studying the Riverfront South plan, development plan, this past year?
If you, referring to, during this calendar year, 2022.
Since January, we said we weren't going to spend any money on it.
Right, right, not, I have not spent any money on it, the legal department has not spent any money on it.
And we, before this.
Before this was.
Are there bills, incurred bills that have not been paid?
I'm sorry for interrupting, Chris Stone, District Counsel, there have been, there's two bills that relate to this topic. One is the retainer bill, or retainer amount, that was paid to outside council to deal with the South Meadows trash issues, et cetera. That was, I think, approximately $80,000 a year, that was for 2021, and only 2021, it had not been and has not been renewed. That was one, that, those are not outstanding, that's paid in full. There's another bill that is outstanding, and I, it's primarily, has to do with land disposition, excess land disposition, that is tangentially related to this, because it has some energy component to it. That bill is a 2021, one or two entries from 2022, approximately $14,000, and that has not been paid.
Are we planning on paying that, or, and who authorized that?
The, well, the work was authorized through, I believe, through the Finance Board, and it's Attorney Sanders was doing work on the land disposition, or excess land disposition, and on energy. It was of the 14, I'm sorry.
Energy was a very small piece of that.
Oh, it's prior, it's prior to the, oh, it's prior to the 50,000 that was Board of Fin, I'm.
Yeah, the 14,000 that was incurred was prior to the, oh, sorry. 14,000 was incurred prior to the Board of Finance, and then, I believe, Water Bureau and the full board approving approximately $50,000 to study or help develop the sale of land. We haven't spent any money of that 50,000, we've committed to you, we're not spending any money, but prior to that, there has been incurred $14,000 in legal bills associated with this land acquisition. And then there's another bill that has not been approved by Chris, which is referred to the South Meadows, which is another bill that's outstanding, that we have not authorized work.
If this board has not authorized any work on the Riverfront South development, then how did these bills occur?
It wasn't the South development. Well, I, all I know is what I authorized or didn't authorize, and I know, I know I did not authorize work for 2022 on South Meadows development, or South Meadows Waste Energy Plant, the CRA plant.
Nor, nor, nor has, have I.
But the 14 million dollars was prior to that.
The 14,000.
Right, that's, but, but there are two, and I, and I just, it's really, it's really important to keep them clear, separate. The $14,000 is 2021, almost exclusively, okay? That's 2021.
But we weren't supposed, we'd never authorized that.
You did not, you did not. The 2022, whatever that is, if there is any, it was, has not been authorized by, you asked if there was any, not to my knowledge.
But we are aware that, that there are, that there are bills being incurred or generated that, which we have not seen copies of. So, we have.
Why are we incurring bills for work? We are incurring bills right now for work that this board hasn't authorized.
That's, that's what we've been told, that's what I've been told, I've shared that information with the chairman and with the CEO.
I was reading the minutes that you had sent me back 17 years ago concerning Riverfront South, it's amazing minutes. One of the things that came up in those minutes was something similar to this, which was, you know, that board back then didn't authorize anything, and so I have a question for you. In our charter, what authority does the chairman have? Could you give us a definition of what authority he has?
Sure. The, there are specific sections of the charter, which, I'll just, I'll just number them, it's 211, 31, 313, 45, 716. Those are three provisions of our charter, our compiled charter, that identify specific duties of the chairman, and they include calling meetings, being an ex officia member of all committees, signing tax warrants, signing bonds, notes, certificates of debt, selecting members of the Water Bureau, established for hunting, boating, fishing, I think that's the hogback commission.
That's a tough one, really.
And issuing collection warrants. Those are the specific duties of a chairman that are not enjoyed by anyone other than the chairman, or in his or her absence by the vice chairman. That's, that's what the charter provides.
He's to carry out stuff that is authorized by this board.
If this board were to say, by motion approved, resolution approved, to do X, Y, and Z, then I'm sure, yes, the chairman would be charged to execute on that resolution.
Okay, but if I could, I'd like to make a motion that we not pay those bills that have incurred, and stop them from incurring.
We have a copy of the bills first?
I have to tell you, I haven't seen the bills.
Right.
I've asked three times for the bills, I haven't received them.
That's what we're trying to get, we'll have ready for you at the next.
I don't even understand why we have bills if this board has not authorized someone to do the work.
Well, if someone can make a claim, we can't preclude them from making a claim.
This is one of our attorneys that works for us, right? A consultant or an attorney that works for us. Why are we, why are we asking him, somebody must have asked him to do the work.
I can only tell you, as Chris said, I have not authorized work for, from this lawyer in 2022. We're aware of him incurring bills, we have not seen any bills. He has made a statement that he is incurring bills. We've asked him for a copy of those bills, we haven't seen them.
Were there bills a year ago?
No, they're 2022, again, separate.
22 is the issue, the, we know that the $14,000.
We have not paid the $14,000 because there's a couple of issues there with the $14,000. I give, I gave direction after the board in discussions, no more billing on the land acquisition issues, period, as of discussion on August 17. There's about $4,000 that were billed after August 17. We are reviewing the bills prior to that, and that $14,000, and we haven't finalized our review yet, but we were looking at each, each item that was billed, and we're still going through that.
Something different than.
Commissioner?
Okay, something different.
Scott, just to make the record clear, the Water Bureau never authorized $50,000 to be spent for land sales, that was, came out of finance.
Right.
Dominic, you're on the Water Bureau, you're on the Water Bureau, Jackie, you're on it, we all, I said, we would look at land for sale, at no cost, other than our in-house attorneys, if we got that far. You have two properties, we haven't had a Water Bureau meeting, so, but it wasn't the Water Bureau that asked for the $50,000, okay?
But we did not, we did not authorize the spending of any of that money.
And the second thing is, Chris, Attorney Stone, I don't know, a half hour ago, said no, I don't know, maybe it was Dominic's question, that no subcommittee, Water Bureau, I don't, maybe Finance can do it, they can authorize money to be spent on a subject?
Yeah, the full board approved the 50.
Right.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Went from Finance.
But we did not spend that.
The subcommittee, okay.
That hasn't been spent.
And that, if I might.
I understand, that's all right, fine.
Just to be clear, that was really an allocation, I'll say, I'll say a call to set aside, out of my budget, it wasn't new money.
Okay.
But I haven't spent a dime of it, and I cannot spend a dime of it until or unless I come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
One last question, if I could, Mr. Chairman, possibly for Finance, is it true that this, from what, the information that I've read, this 2006 MDC study, back in 2006, we capitalized it over 20 years, is that true?
CP, yeah, it's right on the phone.
Yes, it is true. The cost, Scott Jellison, the cost, I wasn't here, but in researching the request from the commissioners on the proposal and the study, the plan itself, our records show that there was $70,000 spent on the study. The study was done by Malcolm Perny, but the sub to Malcolm was.
Pete, help me. J and, J and.
No, B and L.
B and L.
So, Malcolm Perny was one of our on-call engineering firms at the time, B and L was a sub to them that did most of the work, the total cost was about 70,000, and our records in SAP shows that we capitalized that study.
So, how much extra did that cost by capitalizing it?
Over 20 years.
And I hope we're not doing that kind of procedure anymore.
I can tell you, Commissioner Scott Jellison, capitalizing a study is not, is not appropriate, so we will not, we do not capitalize studies. If you look at the example of the Avalorm study that we did for the towns, that study was, was, we used a hundred some odd thousand dollars from our operational budget, but yes, capitalizing a study is probably not a good idea. But yes, capitalizing a study is probably not a good idea.
Thank you.
So could you answer his question?
What is?
His question was, what was the cost on the $70,000 purchase order 402637? What did it cost us in interest rates 20 years ago? You know, I'm sure we're paying 3%, 4% some of those years.
I can't answer that question. The money we borrow is right now raised at 2%. So I don't know what it was then.
Right.
We borrowed through the state in the, in the closing issue. Further questions? Further questions?
I thought you were pay cash.
Leave action, let's proceed.
I just wanted to point out that it's not a proper way to, to capitalize that type of activity.
We agree.
That's all, thank you.
Yep. Opportunity for general public comments. Judier? Okay. Commissioners' comments and questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just one. Yes, Commissioner Mandic. I just wanted to go back for just a quick second on two items for the board to consider in future meetings. And the one is, if you really look at some of the committees that we have, I think some of them need to disband. Maybe the organizational, Committee on Organization can take that up, or whatever committee, Mr. Chair, that you would deem.
We're restricted from abandoning without the legislative change, but we'll come back with a report on those.
Sure, if we could, because I think some of these are not meeting. I don't think that they're, you know, why should we have them? I think if we streamline things a little bit, it would be a little bit better. The second is, I would like to bring up something as far as conflict of interest statements. I run a nonprofit organization. Every year, my board of directors, in October through December, signs a conflict of interest statement in full transparency to the board, to anything else, to everybody, so we know if there's any conflicts of interest. And sometimes we have them, sometimes we don't, but at least it's transparent and everybody knows. I would highly recommend, the three years that I've been on the board, we have never had something like that. I know other nonprofits, I've been on other nonprofit boards that I've had to do these things. My auditors actually ask them for me every year when we go through our audit process. I believe that this is something that the board should adopt on an annual basis to fill out a conflict of interest statement that each commissioner has to fill out. It's based on our, you know, transparency for MDC and for us as commissioners. So I think I would like to, you know, maybe work with legal staff to draft something up and get this through the board. I think many of us have had to do this for other boards that we sit on.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Chairman, yes, the City of Hartford does this. I fill out one every single year because I'm a member of commissions, including this one. I think it's good for the public in terms of transparency, just a good thing to do with volunteer to provide a copy of that, of the form, which we've done for many, many years. And in fact, it came out of an ethics committee that I also participated on, and we came up with this as a, as one way to be transparent. And the other thing I wanted to, just to mention, is that if we don't have a, and I don't know if the charter has parameters in terms of what bonding, you know, should be used for, then I think, you know, that might be a good thing to have in there. I know we have it in.
General policy you're talking about, okay.
You know, this is what bonding.
The general rule is, it should be, it could be used for a capitalizable project.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, that, you know, that.
And that's, and our charter provides that.
It does provide it.
It does provide it.
Because I know that in.
It doesn't exclude the other, though, but it does provide that.
Well, in our charter, in Hartford, you know, you have the parameters. It's, you know, it's a capitalization, and it's got to be, you know, X number of years, you know, of service that you capitalize for.
Right.
So you don't get into these other issues.
Metro Hartford Alliance has a significant, has a same situation, and I sit on that board and I have to sign, it's more than just a signature, though, it's a whole series of issues that you've got to address and do it, so. Every year I sign that, on that issue, too. Commissioner?
I have a very brief comment on something else if we're, if we're doing this topic.
Okay, sure.
Very quick, I promise I will be very quick. Thanks to Nick Solemy, Eric Gray, and some MDC staffers who put together an effort to have the MDC Water Wagon, for those of you who are familiar with it. In West Hartford, we had a end-of-school-year event on one of those hot days in June last month, first time since COVID. The Water Wagon was much needed and very much appreciated by everyone there. So I wanted to thank Mr. Solemy and the other folks from operations who got it ready, and Mr. Gray, who was the, in my observation, very kind and very patient MDC staffer who was there with a lot of exuberant, young, elementary school age children. So it was well-received, and in my view, a positive demonstration of what this organization does. So thanks to Mr. Solemy, Mr. Gray, and their colleagues for getting that ready.
We've upgraded that, by the way, that wagon a couple of years ago, two, three years ago. Further questions? If not.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, through you. I'm a little concerned with REA, and I'd like the clarification on whether or not we're going to continue doing, not doing business, but are they, are we going to still continue to work with them or not?
We're not working with them in terms of any deal. We're going to deal with that in the Committee of Technology. I think Chris has made it quite clear on what the procedure is going to be, that we're going to use to make a determination on anything we're dealing with.
If we go forward with anything, I don't see how they could participate in any bidding process if we go forward with looking at that technology.
Let's see what the, let's see what the process is before we make that determination. I think it makes sense to, let's see what, where this thing goes. We aren't ready to even enter into any agreements until we see that this is a commercialized issue, and then, like Ray said, there's other opportunities. And our, our legal counsel said the procedure would be, we'd have to go out and look at what's out there before we make any decisions.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, just briefly, I can't, and wouldn't pretend to be able to dictate who you should talk to or not talk to. I would only strongly suggest that based upon what is happening, or has happened over the past two weeks with REA, that the better, wiser course is to not have any communication with any representative of REA while this thing is, while we work out this issue of the misrepresentations that are in that website. Lesson learned, right? As my CEO says oftentimes, we, I can't trust that whatever information we might share or statements we might make won't be misinterpreted as something other than they are. I'm not suggesting that's happened, but I can't control what, how those statements are interpreted by someone else. So the better course, my advice to each of you is to not, I know, is to not have any communication.
Okay, and then one last thing, if I could, Mr. Chairman. The technologies, I'm all for looking at it, as long as we're not spending money. But our main line of business is sewer and water, and we have a long way to go on making our system more efficient. Not too long ago, the chairmen's met with union leaders, and it's not been brought to this board yet, but they had serious problems with communication. They were worried about the pension, they were worried about advancement, they were worried about the, choosing the right equipment to use in operation, there was some bad choices on equipment. So we learned a lot of things from these union leaders. And I think we can learn more from them and the workers, but it hasn't been put on the agenda, and I'd like to see it on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just for the record, Commissioner Sweets has met with the unions relative to the pensions. We're in negotiations with them, it causes some other problems of what we can do. So I know Scott has had some, on the question of equipment.
He also stated that, every union stated that they're, they don't have enough manpower. Besides picking the wrong equipment, they're also all down manpower, to the point where they felt that it was jeopardizing things. So I think it's an important subject, and we need to talk about it. That's all.
Commissioner, if I may, I don't disagree with you, and Commissioner Taylor and Sweets has asked that I bring to PPI a management study that will talk specifically about this. I know you and I talked about bringing this to. Yes, we talked about bringing the topic to strategic planning and talking about all of these types of issues. Does it make sense for us to have more crews or use contractors? I don't disagree with you. We are going to bring that, a management study, to PPI. It'll be talking about, presently, right now, it's 120 pages, and we'll be bringing that to PPI in August, and we'll be addressing a lot of those questions. We have, have had Commissioner Taylor and Commissioner Sweets from PPI attend meetings with union negotiations, specifically just recently, last week, regarding our wellness program. We are going to propose a significant change in this year, in this contract that's ending in January of 2020, December of 2022, which will include a wellness program that actually provides a real benefit to our employees, which really follows the state, and it really follows a program of making sure our wellness. We're spending 16 million dollars a year, with approximately, you know, 75% of that is spent on 15% of the employees. So we're going to bring that presentation to you, and hopefully we answer all of your questions that you've raised, and we'll do that in mid-August.
Okay, thank you. And then one last thing, too. Coldbrook, we allocated $1.4 million for it, which we have not used yet. Do you anticipate needing that or not?
Thank you, and I did, I should have mentioned that tonight, but I did mention that at the Board of Finance meeting. So as I've reported before, as you know, we put aside $1.4 million in anticipation in 2000, I believe it was 20, that we were going to get this big bill, that they had told us it could be as much as a million dollars for 2021, and, you know, 2020. We received bills up through 2020, and the only thing that we owe them, what they, we don't agree with them, but the only thing that they say we owe them for all of 2020 is 105,000. And for all of 2022, again, we were anticipating 1. some odd million dollars. We carried that 1.4 million dollars over two years in a row. They're telling us the only thing we owe them is 251,000. So we're going to present to Board of Finance and the board during the budget cycle to say, we've been carrying 1.4 million in anticipation. We know that our risk is only 106 plus 250, and then whatever we get this coming year. So we will be recommending to reduce that down to a number that we feel comfortable, the board feels comfortable, that our risk is covered.
Okay.
That's already in Finance, we've been dealing with that. Go ahead, Commissioner Taylor.
Mr. Chairman, through you to my fellow commissioners. 2003 was the last time that the MDC was examined by outside consultants who specialized in the utility industry. And that's 20 years ago, and we have gone through profound changes. Some of you have received copies of that report. If you haven't, you can request that of the corporate secretary and, or counsel's office, yeah, and he'll send it out again to people. I would suggest that you take a look at that. And I would suggest, in the strongest terms, that it is time for us to take another careful look at ourselves. We have gone through significant changes, many of which are for the better. But I still think that there are other areas that we need to look at. This is not anything of, in the nature of gotcha. This is just an honest, neutral look by someone who is examining companies like ours. And it's not reinventing the wheel, you know, these people do this all the time. And I think that it warrants our taking a look. I think that we owe it to ourselves, to our employees, to staff, and more particularly to the people in the district. We've done a good job, we've come a long way, but there's always a way of looking at it and doing it better. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other comments?
Just to comment on Commissioner Taylor, because I do also recall that study, and correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Taylor, but the bottom line from their report was, stick to your lines of business. And that was sort of the sum total of their report, although there were many that they covered.
There's a significantly, a lot of stuff that was in there.
But I mean, I mean.
But again, that's, that's an outside opinion, and that's what we want to hear. Right.
I mean, I think one of the things that's very interesting about the report is that you will notice, when you read it, that one of the areas that they said that we needed to take a very careful look at was our IT area. And millions of dollars later, and really ramping up in staffing. You know, we are where we are. We're far ahead of the game.
And I think that you're going to see that staff will point out many of the things that we've done prior to that, which is great. This is a time, I think we've done enormous, just in the IT side, it's just incredible what we've done in this process. So let's, let's, tonight's, if we're into this for three hours and a half now. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Without objection, we stand adjourned.
I got 30 seconds, I won. We had to bet on the time.
Motion to adjourn is in order at any time, you understand?
I know, but that was.
Just give me the look, I will think of it.